This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for March 21st at 6:00 PM. Would we all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Okay, thanks, everybody. This is the makeup meeting for the meeting that we should have had last week with the snowstorm, that we all managed to survive, I think. So we will have another meeting next week, our regular scheduled meeting, but tonight we'll try to catch up on activities and issues that came before us, okay? We have open time for the public for the first few minutes. Who's here for open time for the public? Anybody? Yes, sir. Come on up. Just knock that mic down towards you a little bit. There you go. Perfect.
My name is Richard Leclerc. I live at 55 Strong Road, Southampton. I'm past Commander of the American Legion, Post 168. I'm here to ask for your permission to hold the Memorial Day Parade.
Okay.
We'd like to have the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the Highway Department notified of our intentions, and also to invite every member of the Select Board and town officials to come join us in marching the parade.
Sounds great. This will be the second time, and we had it last year, right? So we had a couple of years hiatus, but last year was the first year we resumed it.
Yes.
And it was a great day then. So, yeah. Well, I don't know that we have any particular objection to that. Does anybody have anything? I think we would love to be able to do the parade again this year. It's certainly a great town activity, and I think I'll just go ahead and speak for everybody, saying permission granted.
Thank you so very much.
And we'll definitely let all the various departments know. And it's going to be, what day are we on this year? What day is it actually on this year?
When was it?
Usually it's the 31st.
Lucy, Town Clerk, member of the Memorial Day Parade Committee. It's Monday, May 29th.
29th.
It's Memorial Day, and we're checking with Norris School for rain date, I mean, rain inside the school for that day.
In case.
Yeah, and we also have a letter that we're going to send out to the various participants from last year that participated, to see if they want to participate again.
I think we had some of the local businesses, and we had quite a crowd last year.
Yeah, we have.
We had a tremendous turnout.
Plus our state rep.
Last year was a perfect day, too.
Yeah.
Senator and everybody that came, I think, right?
Yep, so we're going to have that same kind of letter to go out to various participants.
So Monday, the 29th?
Monday, the 29th, kickoff at 9:00. We have to meet again to do the lineup, but we'll have more information, but, yeah.
But starting from the school and coming on downtown?
Yep.
Perfect. Stopping at the cemetery and then coming all the way down to town hall?
Yes.
Yep.
So you all know that our Veteran Agent is away, so our, the East Hampton Veteran Agent is covering.
Right, is covering, right. Good. Thanks, Richard. Much appreciated, and we look forward to it.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else? Open time for the public. Yeah, come on up.
All right, see you later.
Hi, I'm Lucy York, 81 Maple Street. I saw you 14 days ago, and 20, it's been 21 days since that house was lost on 79 Maple. Should I wait or just keep talking?
You can keep talking, yeah.
Okay. So I was wondering, I know there's procedures that you need to do, but being Commissioners of the Fire Department, have you done any planning with Thursday nights? I guess Maple Street is one of the two most dangerous roads in Southampton, as it was stated. On Thursday nights, do they practice driving on those roads? Do they know where those roads are?
I'm sure they know where the roads are. I don't know if they've done any practice up there, and certainly in recent times. And we made an announcement, I think it was last, last meeting. So what we've done is we've had the town administrator reach out to the three main departments that were on call.
Right, right.
So police, fire, and highway that night, and have them give us their report of what happened.
But that's history. Moving forward, what are we going to change in the training?
Well, we've got to get some basic facts of what happened, and then this is all toward a plan. We've got to get other departments that have been involved as well.
Right, but this is just fire, training our fire people to save our houses?
Well, that's a separate discussion with the, with the Fire Department, perhaps. But the whole intention is to try and plan for avoiding this kind of situation in the future. So it's going to involve...
And part of that would be training, changing the training?
I'm sure it will. But it's going to be more than that. So we were going to get more information so that we can then call in the right people that need to be involved in that, from the Water Commissioner to the Planning Board, whomever needs to be involved.
Highway Department.
Highway Department definitely will be involved. So all of them, we need to do that. So we wanted to get the first step of the information first.
I know that. That's what you told me two weeks ago.
So that's coming in before the end of this month. We're getting that information. So once we do that...
Okay. Did you have something else you wanted to say, or that was it?
I have to be called upon by the Chair.
Oh. And what, some people talked about Maple Street, the condition of it, and Maple Street's been Maple Street all my life. It's, it's, so I don't know that you can change, that's not going to be a quick fix, but there's other things you can do, like training, or I guess the, rather than going up Maple Street, they were instructed to do crooked ledge, and I guess that didn't happen. I don't know, and we'll find out at some point. But in other towns, there's, and because that's a historical road supposedly, that section of Maple Street, so there's, in other towns, even Northampton, there's a sign that says, pass at your own risk, because there's a one-lane bridge or something, right? So rather than letting all this traffic go up, is it possible, and maybe that's a Highway Department question, putting, you know, one-lane road ahead rather than letting everything, literally, it is parts one-lane?
I think there's a wide variety of possibilities and solutions that we've got to come up with. I mean, no doubt about it.
Right.
The intent is to try and develop a plan in concert with the various town officials that are involved in that, whether it be from zoning to highway to fire, to figure out how we can avoid this situation. Because Maple Street is one, but there are other roads, as you noted, that are, you know, in similar situations.
And I think you've all been in town politics long enough that working three departments or more than three departments is difficult, but this is fire, training the fire people how to deal with parts of Southampton, the hydrant-less areas. So, I mean, you don't have to talk to all the companies or committees for that. That's just fire. Like, moving forward, there's three different big sections, but this is just fire training. Nothing's been talked to yet about?
I have not had a conversation with the Fire Chief about his training receivers of what he does on Thursday night.
I'm not saying it's his training, but just for the town, so...
It's something we will, we will take up. We haven't, we have not had that conversation yet.
When will that be? Because you don't have to talk to the Highway Department for that.
It's not the Highway Department.
I know.
I live off of a street which is probably equally as concerning. I live right off of Moosebrook Road, which is a dirt road.
Right, right, oh, yeah.
It's got gullies on either side. New houses have created even more of a problem.
Yeah, I've been there.
Run off of ice, one-way road.
Yep.
And water, we have one at the bottom of our street, but water would probably be on Strong Road. But it does take the other departments. I mean, highway's involved, planning is involved. There's discussions about doing a mapping of what streets in town don't have public water, and would the Planning Board consider requiring all new developments, for example, to have cisterns?
Right.
So it actually does involve other departments. And the good thing about Southampton is it's a small town.
Yeah.
So even when you're talking about, you know, the planning, it's not that difficult for the Highway Planning Board, Police Department, Fire Department to actually have a meeting and strategize on what the next steps are. But we did take the first step to be able to have all the departments that were involved write up basically what happened. We have to figure out exactly what the problem was.
Right.
Our Fire Chief's been very willing to have a public forum and discuss bringing representatives that were there that night. So the first step we took just last Tuesday to ask everybody that was involved in this, including other towns that helped.
Yes.
What was right down before it get too long as past, what your experiences were that night. We don't know what the problem is until we hear firsthand from the people that were there. We obviously know how terrible the outcome was, but there were a lot of problems, and we can't fix them until we know what they are.
Correct, and I appreciate that. But collaborating is wonderful, but just, no one has talked about training or changing the Thursday nights, that maybe they do go out and check out different roads?
It's a good suggestion. We haven't made that suggestion yet.
And how would I make that suggestion to someone, or will you talk?
You're welcome to, but I think that's something that we can do as well.
Okay, who would I talk to?
The Fire Chief.
And how do I get ahold of him?
John Workman, Chief John Workman is, you could either stop over the Fire Department or you can contact him.
Is he there 9 to 5 or 20?
Well, he's, there is a number. I'm just...
Okay, I'll look it up.
Yeah, can you, Ed, are you able to give, do you have it handy, or do you, do you have Chief John Workman's phone number?
No, I'd have to look it up.
When the tax bills went out, there was, Lucy, remember, you sent out a, when the tax bills went out?
Okay.
There's a pamphlet that has all the numbers of all the departments. You could find it right there.
Right.
Yeah, thanks. That's all right, you're here. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Open time for the public. All right. We will close open time for the public and move on to the next agenda item. And tonight we have reports to the Select Board, and we have our Library Director, Johanna Douglas. Please come on up.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss the Edward Public Library's work in 2022, 23, and its plans for the future. My name is Johanna Rodriguez-Douglas, and for eight and a half years, I was the library's youth librarian. In November, I was asked to be the library's director, and it was my honor to accept the position. Our library is a jewel. It was a gift given in 1996 for future generations of Southampton residents. Several people involved in the construction of the library, like Ed Daniels and Richard Frary, have passed on recently. Others are still going strong and are still involved in the library. Our task and our opportunity is to be the stewards of their vision. Priorities, activities. Under the direction of Barbara Golden, our library made it through the worst of the COVID pandemic. We have withstood COVID closings, the E Street Bridge closing, curbside pickup, and limited hours. In January 2022, we introduced our current hours and reintroduced in-person programming. In-person events are vital. It's the energy of the quilters and the writers groups, our lovely storytime, the monthly book club meeting, and the joy of summer reading. For me, the tipping point came in June, when we had 125 people in the pavilion for the Birds of Prey event. Our meeting room is now occupied with the Girl Scouts, various committees, tutors, and condo boards, as well as a variety of monthly events. We just hosted, in collaboration with the Council on Aging, an Aging Care Options Workshop with Highland Valley Elder Services. 20 people attended. The following day, I hosted the annual Valentine's Day Tea, and 25 children and 20 adults were in attendance. People are getting back in the habit of coming to the library. Our priority is to keep these people safe and confident. We still encourage the use of masks, and we have dispersed hundreds of free COVID tests to patrons that were supplied to us, thanks to the Southampton Board of Health. We also continue to offer a Zoom option for people who want to join the conversation at the book club, the writing group, or the monthly Friends meetings. One of the many strong library advocates in Southampton was Richard Frary. When Mr. Frary passed, his family asked for gifts in his memory to our Friends Group. We used this money to pay for the beautiful sign. In front of the library, we repost our hours and announcements. The sign was installed last spring and dedicated to the memory of Dorothy and Richard Frary. In December, the library became a member of Overdrive Advantage. This program allows our patrons to have first access to the most popular titles in the ebook and e-audiobooks in the CW Mars collection. The cost of this program comes out of our materials budget. Lisa, Emily, and I maintain the library's adult collection, and we are joined by our substitutes Cynthia Lucier, Barbara Thompson, Doris Hurd, and Carol Lacoss in creating superior customer service. We supervise a multitude of volunteers, both adults and youth, perform all the library's regular duties, and lead and support all the library's programming. Emily also leads popular tech help sessions weekly by appointment. Lisa continues to catalog and process our collection, and until our youth librarian is installed, I continue to help both departments. Youth Department. Throughout the pandemic, we have focused on storytimes, summer reading, and at least one monthly event. Storytime continues to draw loads of families into the library. It has also drawn our retiring Fire Chief, John Workman, State Representative Kelly Pease, and State Senator John Velas. Last summer's summer reading program drew an actual record of 200 registrants. I would like to extend my gratitude to the William Norris School and Principal, who worked with me to spread the news of summer reading. We were honored to be one of only six libraries in Massachusetts chosen to host Blades, the Bruins mascot. Another large crowd that I dare say included plenty of adults gathered in the pavilion to greet him and have their pictures taken, pushing their children aside. Just joking, but it did happen. I have been preparing for Summer Reading 2023. Our kickoff event will be Dream Tale Puppets, which offers high-quality, original puppetry performances for children and families. One of the many hangovers from COVID is the loss of audiences for live performances. Dream Tale Puppets received a grant from the Southampton Cultural Council because they believe, what I believe, that we need to encourage children to appreciate live performances and to become great audiences. Budget spending concerns. As many of you know, we have a mandate from the State of Massachusetts. It is state law to maintain the municipal appropriations requirement, called the MAR. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 78, Section 19A, requires the town to meet a minimum, MAR, each year, in order for us to be certified, and most importantly, for us to receive state aid. Our state aid is what helps us to pay for materials and for our membership in CW Mars. If you are not a library user, may I invite you to see the benefit of using this service to get your books, magazines, movies, and more? You can use your library card to access the Libby app and download free audiobooks to play in your car. Information should be available to everyone. Personnel staffing updates. Our big staffing changes began in the fall when Barbara Golden retired, and I became the interim and then the Director of the Library. Carol Lacoss joined our staff as a substitute librarian in September, and Andrea Leclerc will be our next youth librarian. Andrea has an MLS degree from Simmons College and is currently a school librarian. She is looking forward to reaching out to the Norris School and getting the kids into the library and reading. We have been extremely fortunate to have Lisa Shea and Emily Munska on staff now for many years. When budget season begins, I would like you to consider giving them at least a COLA. They are reliable, smart, and effective at their jobs. Some level of financial reward really ought to be paid to prevent departures, but also to show appreciation. Plans, events for the next four to six months. After a busy winter where we hosted Chess Club, Besties Bash, Lego Club, Ed the Wizard, Origami, and more, we are looking forward to a full spring and summer. The knitting group will meet every other Friday in April. Our Friends Group is hosting a Community Book Donation Day in honor of Earth Day on Saturday, April 22nd, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. On April 18th, we will host an Our Feathered Friends Storytime in collaboration with the Hampton-Hampshire Conservation District. On May 23rd, local author Megan Tady will be at the library to support her new book, Super Bloom, and we are delighted to be a part of her book tour. I continue to read, to lead our popular, and read, our popular book club. We meet on the last Tuesday of the month, and new and occasional members are always welcome. So everybody in here. In June, summer reading will begin again. Along with the Dream Tale Puppets kickoff, NASA Ambassador William Fornier has already agreed to return to the library to present an eclipse program. Bill had a terrific program last summer on how to use your telescope. Bill hopes to prepare the community for the solar eclipses that are coming this fall. I have applied for a giveaway of solar lenses, courtesy of the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Long-term issues for your consideration. The library needs a lighting upgrade for the exterior and the interior of the building. Our stacks are simply too dark. The lights that we have are inefficient and add to the cost of our utilities. Energy costs skyrocketed this year, and we will, alas, end up over budget. The switch to more efficient lighting should help us in the future. Our Building Committee started looking into this issue in 2019. In fact, we had an estimate from JK Energy Solution to replace the CFL and fluorescent lighting with LED lighting fixtures and retrofits. Along with decreasing our energy costs, this solution would be a reasonable accommodation for me and others who have visual problems. Furthermore, due to vandalism, we have lost two of our exterior lights. The remaining lamps are also dim and present a public safety issue that retrofits could solve. I received an estimate in November from Blanchard and Daily to retrofit those lights to LEDs. In 2026, the building will be 30 years old. I appreciate the effort that Southampton has maintained the facility, and hope that we can continue to preserve it. Suggested tools, excuse me, resources. Our statistics show that the library is having a steady increase in circulations toward pre-pandemic levels. According to the MBLC website, the library had a total circulation of 42,732 items in 2022. The library had a total of 39,214 print holdings, and of these, 13,711 were for youth. Downloadable ebooks and audio circulated 187,000-plus times. In 2022, we received 7,176 items from other libraries, and we lent out 5,500 items. A terrific resource on our website is the Gale Reference Database. I really want to push this for you guys. When a user goes to the Find It tab on our website, they have access to a world of information about history, art, science, the works, along with a vast trove of articles, some specifically vetted for children. So your children don't have to just go through the internet going, who was Christopher Columbus, and finding out that they don't, they can't even read the article. It's vetted for them already. In 2022, the system added legal forms to the site, and these forms such as real estate, wills, healthcare have been used and accepted in Massachusetts. In 2023, Heritage Quest was also added to the site so that patrons can do free genealogical research. In fact, all these resources are available free, and frequently, they are also available in Spanish. I thank you for your time.
Great, 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 okay. All right, who has some questions? Anyone?
Wow, that's a lot of information.
Yeah, a lot of wonderful activity.
Thank you.
You guys have been busy, no doubt about it, no.
No, and honestly, I mean, there's some definitely, some new resources there that I must say that I was not aware of in terms of some of these things, that the genealogical research and the legal forms and all those things, I was not even aware that that existed, that we could access so easily.
It's great.
Yeah, no, that's wonderful.
And I appreciate the more people know, because not everyone wants a physical book, to know that the audiobooks and the other online resources, at no cost to the library patron, are available through Edwards Library, I think is a really important feature.
It is.
For people who only want to use, you know, internet access.
Right, and plenty of people, again, with visual problems, that's their preferred way of accessing information so that they can increase the font size.
Yeah, it offers accommodations for different types of disabilities as well.
Right, exactly.
Good question. Yeah. This might be as much for Ed as it is for you. Is there any opportunity to replace lights with the Green Communities Grant Initiative?
Yes, there is. It just depends on where they fall on the scale of the five different projects that we have out there. And I've got the company working on giving, getting us not only the proposal, we've got the proposals back, but I'm trying to get the information on, for each one, of what it will save in energy, so the Select Board can compare that.
And the other question is, in terms of the funding for next year and the minimum commitment, is, how is that listed on the budget draft that we have? Is that listed under column two, or is that listed under column?
You have it under your wish list, is it? The Mars?
The, I was asked to present a level-funded budget, which is what I did, but I also made a small wish list budget. I mean, in my opinion, it was not outrageous, in which the COLAs that I mentioned for staff, as well as a percentage of 19% for utilities costs, were included. And that would, and so that would help us to achieve that MAR number.
Right. Do we have that number, though?
We do. We have the, sorry, in this form that we were given tonight. So we have the 24 budget request and the wish list budget for 24. It's about a $2,500 difference between those two, and then, we're about, yeah, the 24 basic budget was the same as the 23 amended budget, the way I'm reading this, I think. 181,700 and something?
Correct.
Okay. And so the wish list budget is where you put in the COLAs and the extra utilities?
The extra utilities. But I, in terms of that lighting, per what Maureen was speaking about, most of my conversations have been with Ed about the Green Communities Grant, exactly that.
So it's not included in this?
It is not included in that, because it's, it's actually, at this point, I'm not exactly sure what those numbers would be like. But, I mean, if I spitball the amount of like 16,000, that would be, I don't know, potential correct amount for the inside, but another 3,000 for the outside.
Sounds about right.
Right. Thank you.
And then, are we, I know oftentimes we've had this issue of, you know, keeping our Mars certifications, so with what you've put in your basic budget, that keeps us there? We're fine?
The basic budget does keep us within that, but I certainly, I, I mean, I don't know how else to say it, but, I mean, the staff is not being paid appropriately.
Well, we haven't figured out what we're doing for either step increases or COLAs as yet, so we're still talking about that. I think as we talk about everybody's budget. But the way we understood this, right, is if you don't achieve your certification, then you end up having consequences where the Southampton, Southampton residents are not able to access various libraries, and you also lose the possibility of the state aid.
The state aid would not be able to, it wouldn't come to us. And the state aid is, and I'm going to give you an approximate, which I may have over there, is like $13,000. And I already spoke with CW Mars, and our cost for CW Mars membership, which is what Francine was mentioning earlier, is, will be, again, around $9,000 with our materials that... that is not part of the budget, is, that would be the extra 4,000, so it would eat the whole thing up.
So is the membership fee to Mars in the budget?
Yeah, the membership fee to CW Mars comes from my state grant.
From your state grant?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, got it.
I guess what I'm trying to say is my state grant is vital.
There you go, okay. All right. And it's been around that 13,000 all the time, or is that?
Uh, no, it goes up a wee bit. It's gone up over, my research on it has shown like, just like a couple of $500, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I believe it's required to increase two and a half percent.
Is it? Okay. Yep, okay, great.
In certain categories.
Anybody have any other comments or questions?
Nope, very thorough. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Johanna, very much.
And Joanna was worried about her first presentation in front of the select board, and she did an outstanding job.
Jumped right in there, she jumped right in.
Great presentation.
Yeah, really, I mean, jumping in, first of all, as the new librarian and this, so I think you're, you're well on your way to filling out your duties here, so very good. Thank you very much.
All right. Next, Council on Aging, Joan.
We chose to put it on the big screen, so with Ed's help, we'll.
Of course, it'll take us hopefully not long to get that hooked up. Ed's got to find the magic spot on the floor, which.
We'll see if our files find it. It worked earlier.
I think we need to put a big X, oh my gosh, we need to put an X on the floor where that is, because every time we try to find it, we can't.
Okay, so, run.
So run.
It's down here. Whoops, where'd you go?
Just hit it. Give me a look like.
We have some fancy pie charts, too. Yes.
It's not drawn, huh? There it is again. There it is.
Thank you, Mars.
229. Thank you.
You should be good, and if, yep, click on the green, minimize it, then call up your file.
Thank you. We had it started and then.
I don't know, we're used to it.
Are you used to this?
If nothing else. This has been our challenge.
It's trying.
We have your narrative, so if nothing else, you can follow along that way.
Let's do this.
We got it to work this afternoon when we had the dress rehearsal.
Well, you should have been there once you clicked on that green. There we go.
Yeah.
Where'd it go? There it is, get started. 192, 16, 10, 15, 3. Okay, where's your file?
So I have to minimize this, right, or the file's down here?
Where?
On Documents. Okay, so I just have to scroll down, it's.
Okay, well, you're up there anyway, so.
Oh, there it is, okay, thank you.
You can find it.
Yep.
Click on it.
And it shouldn't disappear. Well, we just skipped to the end, so let me go back to the beginning. There you go.
If you want to go to that one page thing.
Yeah, that one, I got it. Yep. Oh, correct, thank you. Okay.
All right, sure.
Good evening and happy spring, everyone. What a difference a week makes. I know in town you were out of power, some many people were out for 10 hours or so, we had about seven and a half hours out, so I'm glad I'm here tonight and we have power. Obviously, we need it, or we're using it. My name is Joan Linehan, I've had the pleasure of being the Council on Aging Director for the past five and a half years, and our presentation tonight is about our current priorities and activities, our budget, our personnel. So I'll start with the current priorities. Our first priority was to complete a PT, part-time outreach worker job description and scoring, which the Personnel Policy and Procedure Board was able to do last week, and so we will get it in the works to hire an outreach worker for the Council on Aging, which is a very needed position, and that will be from ARPA funds, which is 1A, R-P-A funds. And we're excited about that because it's something we've been talking about for over five years, so I'm glad that finally we found the funding that will be able to get outreach, an outreach worker.
Joan, if I can just interrupt, just so everybody's clear, the ARPA funding for this, though, is not out of the.
Oh, it's not from the town ARPA funding, it is from, well, Senator Vellis was able to get us $50,000, and that, many Council on Agents did get the same $50,000, and that will help at least for a year or two, get an outreach worker into the Council on Aging. The surrounding communities have several outreach workers, so it's really a needed position.
Can you just describe briefly what an outreach worker does?
So our outreach worker would do a lot of the things that our, the director and our other staff are doing, but fueled assistance and SNAP benefits, they would be doing home visits and providing services for isolated people that are in their homes that may need more services and can't necessarily, they may get to the center, but they need more than what we have, social services.
Thank you.
As you well may know, that we're down to one of our three drivers for FRTA, so that's the second priority, is to hire a needed driver and a backup driver. We have been having a wonderful valuable program monthly, a Memory Cafe funded by a Title III grant from Highland Valley Elder Services, which continues through, I believe, August or September, and then the next grant cycle will start. We also are working on the ad hoc new senior center feasibility committee, which is a big priority, and again, the ad hoc grant committee, the timeline is coming up, I think it's from now until May, to submit another grant for the 24-25 season. Our budget spending status. So the COA general funds, we get just over $40,000, and that includes the director's salary and partial wages for the COA Program Coordinator, which is a new position, and local office expenses. Most of our funding is given to us through, well, I shouldn't say most, but another portion of the State Formula Grant is a $24,000 grant, which was increased in 2020 due to that census. It's based on the town census, the senior census, and we get $12 per person per year for that grant. And from that grant, we pay for our volunteer coordinator. It supports partial salary for our program coordinator, and it also pays for certain programs and group classes, and it's very beneficial. As you see the pie charts later, it's a very important part of our budget. We also get a transportation grant, which has been here for many years. This year, it's $28,000. That provides us, we have a van, a 14-passenger wheelchair accessible van, that brings our seniors to medical appointments and programs at the senior center, shopping, hair appointments, field trips to local museums and theaters. In fact, we just went to the Mount Hoi Yok Spring Bowl Show last week, it was very enjoyable, and we had 76 people that were able to give about 1,400 rides to last year. So it's one of our, actually, the top service that the Council on Aging provides. Again, we talked about the ARPA funds, which is $50,000 for the future outreach worker, and maybe some cultural trips, although the cultural trips we are taking from the State Formula Grant. Our personnel and staffing, we have our COA Program Coordinator, Sandy Massimino, she's been working since late June of 2022. She works two days a week, 13 hours a week, she's a vital part of our newsletter and marketing, and she, she has become served safe so that when we have meals in the center, we have a serve safe, certified person. Our second position is our 10-hour-a-week volunteer coordinator, Kate DeSanto. She was hired on November 1st after a four-month vagacy due to Florence Collins' retirement. She is also served safe, certified, and is planning to take the eight-week SHINE training to become a certified SHINE counselor, and that will be a plus-plus for our department. As I said earlier, we're down to one driver, looking for two more drivers, we have an interview tomorrow, and I'm being very hopeful that we can hire someone in the near future. Tim Huber's been doing a great job trying to fill in as best he can. So I am planning, as you probably have seen in the papers, I'm planning for my retirement deadline on June 29th. So with those, that looming over my head in our department, I'll be delegating some duties as able and update policy and procedure, Lufley Binder, and so that the staff can have information at their fingertips. I did forget in my line, my board. I would like to recognize the seven-person COA board, including our liaison, who has been the advisory. Once a month, we meet, we've been meeting on Zoom for the last few years, but I really, Janet Kane is our chair, and we have a wonderful board, very caring, and they do so much to support the Council on Aging, and I, I'm sorry that I missed it in the report, but I will edit that report and make sure that they get recognized. Fifth, we have our Southampton Council on Aging friends and our volunteers. With a staff of three or four, we really couldn't function without our volunteers. So our friends meet once a month, and they have 30 active volunteers who give over 500 hours of volunteer time, equivalent to about $10,000. So we couldn't do what we do without our volunteers. We also support the Senior Tax Work Off Program, one of our receptionists is part of that program, and they also work at the library, the town clerk's office, and I think, believe the assessor's office at this time. Plans for the next four to six months, so again, preparing for the, my retirement and delegating needed duties as possible. We are planning in May to have a what's going on, or what does the COA have to offer program and services, which was suggested by Janet, instead of just having a health fair with outside organizations, but to say, what does the Council on Aging have for you in town? So we'll be working on that program. Obviously, publishing the monthly newsletter and giving it interesting articles, and we mail it out to the over 60 population about four times a year, plus we mail out another 100 for people that pay $5 a month to, to receive the newsletter. We also have it at local businesses, the library, the post office, and the local banks, so we try to get our news out there. We are planning a nine-hole golf outing at the country club, which we haven't used much, but I know a lot of people do like to golf, so we're going to try it on Friday, June 9th, with the help of the friends and many volunteers. And of course, the pickleball. I don't know what I can say about the pickleball, many of you have all played on the pickleball courts, very proud of that, continuing that schedule, I believe, on Thursday, at least Thursday morning, for clinics to teach people who have never played and to support those who have already played. I think they play later in the day, but it's a wonderful addition to the town. Long-term issues that you need to consider. So first and foremost, and I know this meeting isn't the meeting that we're having this in April about the donation of the estate of David Parsons, but I couldn't have this report without mentioning him and his bequeathment to develop a plan for a new senior center. So we are all currently, you know, working on the committee, we meet every other week and trying to determine the best site for the facility and fill the needs of the community and how to move it forward, you know, due to capital campaign funds, et cetera. And I, my suggestion was to put some kind of a thermometer, you know, either at the town hall or at some site that showed our progress, to show how much money we've been raising, so it's been done in other towns. So transportation is always a big issue, we have, it's tough to support the needs of our, our town with one van, one driver at this time, and we've, we ask volunteers all the time to help us to get people to their appointments. So we're doing the best we can, but I really think that we could do more in the area of transportation. Trying to add new programs with the limited facility and limited hours. We did have, before the pandemic, we had evening programs like murder mysteries, and we have our tea that we're having and, and many evening programs like caregiver support, et cetera. We'd like to see more programming on Fridays and evenings, if possible. And staffing requirements, we have lots of calls every day, you know, hundreds of calls a month, and we try to do the best we can with what we have. Again, the outreach to our homebound seniors, we work with the police, the fire, Highland Valley, and the church, they do Meals on Wheels through Highland Valley, and we have the reassurance program and the Triad program with the police and fire, and these are very important programs. Trying to keep our, keeping our seniors in Southampton, I don't have to, you know, any report will say that we need more housing for seniors, affordable housing for seniors in town, and I know they're working towards it, but again, that's a priority because many of our seniors have had to move out of town because they can't stay here anymore. Again, limitations at the current facility, which is only 2,000 square feet, we have 75 maximum capacity, and we aren't able to, without a commercial kitchen, we can't do meals, and so again, hoping to extend the hours after four for evening programs.
Right, no, you close at 3 o'clock, is that right?
3 o'clock, yes. We'd like to at least stay open as long as the rest of the town hall, which is 4 o'clock. Suggested tool resources to help do our job, partnering and networking with MCOA, which is right here in East Hampton, and other senior centers and directors to learn best practices, working with the over 60 population, as well as the local churches. Again, we mentioned Triad, an important program, including police, fire, to ensure the safety and well-being of our seniors, supporting the reassurance program, the winter storm check-in, lock boxes, there's a big lock box program that they're going to go to a couple of the senior complexes and put in 40 lock boxes on the 30th of the month. That's with the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department. And again, our supporting the friends. And again, are supporting the Friends of the Council on Aging and volunteers who make our center a lively, active, and worthwhile asset to our community. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Janet. Do you want the pie chart or? Okay. These are Janet's beautiful pie charts, by the way.
Very colorful.
Janet Kane, Glendale Road, Chair of the Council on Aging Board. First of all, I'm a visual kind of gal, so I prefer to see how everything's broken out. So if you look at the town funding of our programs, it's obvious at 42%, we are highly dependent upon the grants that we receive, both the state formula grant, the FIDA grant, the Franklin Regional Transit Authority grant, and even some of the smaller grants, such as the Highland Valley that we were able to achieve for the Memory Cafe this go-around. So I, you know, I guess if we look at our budget requests for this year, it might push us to 50, slightly over 50% funded by the town. And that would be a big step forward. And we've made a lot of progress, I think, in the last five years. We've come a long way from where, when Joan came on board and was making $20 an hour, and she was working 22 hours initially. We got up to 26. So we've done, I think we've made some great progress thanks to the people in town that really support the Council on Aging. So I want to thank you for that. The other part is we're kind of lumped together with this human services in the budget. When you get Bradley's spreadsheets, we're lumped in with human services. So we're about 28% of that whole section, which includes the Board of Health and the veterans and animal inspection. But we're a pretty small part of that human services area, too. Which button do I pick down here so I don't log us out or something? Okay. So I also just wanted to get a sense of the state formula grant, because it's, I mean, obviously Franklin Regional, everything transportation, whether it's salaries, gets paid for out of the Franklin Regional. And Highland Valley is a memory cafe. But the state formula grant gives us some additional options. So if we look at this year, up to date, we have, you can see, $5,600 was, is, goes to our salaries. So without this monies, without these monies, we wouldn't be able to do the program coordinator. We wouldn't be able to have the volunteer coordinator. I don't have the ARPA there because we're not spending it yet, but that would be another segment of salaries that are paid for by outside sources. Then we spend a little bit less than that, like 4,000, 40, just under $4,900 to date on program and instructor cost. And then supplies is about $3,000. So the bulk of the state formula grant is really paying for the salaries, the remainder of the salaries. It allows us to have a volunteer coordinator, which is so critical when we have so many volunteers that help support the center. And without the state formula grant as well, we wouldn't have a lot of the programs. We have things like the technology support that has become very popular this year, a lot of new programs like Tai Chi, things that we don't want to charge the seniors to support at 100%. We want to be able to support and provide to them so that they can take advantage of it. So those were kind of my couple of visuals that I wanted to share before we got into the budget discussions in support of Joan's presentation. So I don't know if you have any questions on that or kind of self-explanatory, I guess, but.
You want me to switch to the wish?
Yeah, yeah, to the budget.
Usually, I mean, you pretty much go through and spend your entire state formula grant, right? I mean, you get $24,000 a year, if I'm understanding this right?
Yeah, I mean, so as Joan said back in, probably it was just last year was the first year that we got $24,000 because it took time for the census to get taken care of. And it's really based on, I think, the Donahue School, and that's how they came up with 2,001 seniors, 60 and over in town. So yes, by the end, so we have more money that we can spend, which allows us to, you know, hire more qualified or extend the hours of the people that, like, the program coordinator works more than the former administrative assistant, the volunteer coordinator. We've expanded those hours. So without that, Joan would be in the office a lot by herself. So that's been helpful. All right, so I'm going to just go over the budget wishlist first. And rather than ask Joan to talk about why she should have more hours and make more money, I thought I would do that. But honestly, first of all, I want to say thank you to Joan because it's been, we've come a long way in five and a half years. She's introduced, helped us introduce a lot of new programs, brought a lot of excitement to the center, a lot of brightness. And so our greatest loss this coming next fiscal year is Joan, but it's also our greatest opportunity because it's at a time where we can now evaluate the needs of the center, the needs of the seniors in town. Similar to the fire chief, as we get put together our search committee, you know, we have a chance to evaluate what is really needed and how much coverage is really required and how to recruit someone to replace Joan. And that's a big undertaking. So if we look at the directors' wages, right now, what we're asking for is to, as Joan mentioned, expand that to 32 hours per week. Right now, we're, we close at 3 o'clock because I guess we've always closed at 3 o'clock. You know, so it's really time to evaluate. Does it make sense? Joan doesn't close at 3 o'clock. The center closes at 3 o'clock. And there are people that could come in later in the day, and we could continue expanding the programs if we just made it until 4 o'clock. And in addition to that, we've talked about the memory cafe. If that is to continue, it might be better when there's not a lot of traffic in town hall. So to have it on a Friday morning for two hours instead of trying to squeeze it in during the day amongst other activities, in between other activities. So we're asking, so if we had the memory cafe once a month, we have luncheons, thanks to the friends, that always is attended by the director. So that's another two hours on a Friday, which was kind of, has been put on hold due to the COVID, but we're going to start ramping up and doing that again. Plus, there's a two-hour, which happens to be a two-hour COA board meeting. It's grown, grown a lot, right, Joan? So that's at least three weeks of two hours. And if we do other programming, like bring back the spring tea social, evening dances, the murder mystery dinner theater, some of those things in the evening, it'd be very easy for a new director to work that many hours.
Just for clarity, current hours are 26?
26, current hours are 26. So before we started this, we, you know, we sat down with Ed as well, and he gave us a list of communities in the area that are similar in size. And so we did our homework to see how much Deerfield, Granby, Hadley, Hamden, and us are paying hourly rate and how many hours are they working. We are, obviously, the fewest hours of anybody and the lowest rate. But we're not the lowest rate by a lot unless you get to Hamden, and that's kind of an outlier. So I would consider that as an outlier at $41.27 an hour. But the other ones are between the $26 and $30 per hour that is the pay rate. So we use those to help gauge, so asking for 32 hours a week because they're all open 40 hours or 35 hours. So we're looking to go to 32 hours to meet the demand. And also, the step that Joan is on, one step up would be 27.12. So that would depend on whether or not we hire somebody with experience, whether we hire somebody with more experience than that step, and determine what that final rate will be. But that was our recommendation for the budget, budget season anyway, so. Any questions on that part of the wishlist?
No, I think that's clear.
Great, thank you.
You want to speak to the second?
Yeah, you.
Okay. We did, because you know more about that.
We did submit, when we decided that we really needed a program coordinator instead of administrative assistant, we did drop that position. It did get rescheduled, but we never did hire for it. We have money in the grant, the state grant. So our suggestion was to be, there is a need. There's definitely a need for administrative assistant in the Council on Aging. The volume of calls per week is extremely high. We do have volunteers, but it's mostly being generated by scheduling for the FIDA van and for doctor's appointments. And we recommend that the town support at least four hours a week at $16.50 per hour for this position. And then we could do another four hours being supported by the state formula grant. So it could be more hours, but the total increase would be $3,445.20. But I think it's an important thought. I know, you know, just increasing the hours at the center is one thing, but you need to have staffing as well.
So Joan, I'm assuming, given that you've got a program coordinator that works two days a week, and then you've got a 10-hour-a-week volunteer coordinator, that should this person be hired on, they would be scheduled in between time so that there's at least two people there at any given?
That would be ideal. That would be ideal, right? So we don't have 26 hours of supportive staff at this time. So that would be beneficial to have at least two staff on it, you know, for the entire time. And if we open the center an extra hour, that would be crucial to have, I don't know, somebody else there, and they have keys, you know, to open and close, et cetera. And then the program coordinator, let's see, I think that was supposed to be program coordinator's salary remains the same. Currently, she's making $18 an hour for nine hours a week. But I'm not sure, I think we're trying to keep them the same with a COLA, as the librarian had said, the COLAs are very important to show appreciation to the staff.
So then our total budget versus?
Oh, let's see. So let me see if I can go back to that.
I've got two different figures here. I've got a 54 and a 57, so I'm not sure which one I'm looking.
So the first budget would be just increasing hours. And the second would be adding a administrative assistant plus the hours. It looks like the COA, it looks like the COA director, you're looking for more, I don't know if it was more hourly rate and hours? Hours and?
So back on the previous page for a second, if we could just scroll back. That 50, sorry, no, wherever it was on the budget discussion, sorry, it might have been.
On the earlier page?
That totaled up 54, but that's, that's your budget request for the level-funded budget?
The first one is level-funded. Let me just go back. 44, 383, they didn't coincide.
What number, what are you looking at?
At the budget, the first budget, 44, 383.
The presentation, after the long-term issues and the plans and events and the suggested tools? This was, yeah, this was this one, yeah, there was another one. We've got $54,000 here with a $9,000 change over.
I can, I can find it on the thing, but, correct, they're not coinciding. So I apologize for that. This is the budget that was given, submitted to the select board, so I apologize. This one.
So it's a $13,000 increase in budget two.
44 to 57, right?
Do you have any questions for me?
Go ahead, Rini.
I just want to say that in going to other towns to look at senior centers and talk to staff, we are so underfunding our Council on Aging. We have one-third of the residents in Southampton are senior citizens, and to have only 42% of the budget being covered by the operating budget is extremely low. And so I'm hoping that their support for having the Council, the senior center open for 32 hours a week, it seems like most of the other departments are open that, to that extent. We're also, there are so many seniors that can't make it to the center that have needs, and having an outreach worker is so important. But when it's only funded by ARPA, there's going to be a need to fund that over time when the ARPA money's not there. So I'm just hoping that there's support for the senior center because it's really underfunded in terms of our operating budget. I mean, most other towns provide so much more.
That tends to be typical in every town. You know, I've been around for a few years, and that's typical.
It's also not unusual to have a full-time director, possibly an assistant director, and a program coordinator, an administrative assistant, van drives them. I mean, nothing that the senior center is doing is unusual. It's just catching up from where other senior centers have been before.
I just want to put this in a context because everyone's talked about the percentage of the budget. The town's contribution, or the town's responsible right now, their current financial responsibility to the COA is $40,267. That puts it in a perspective, I think, as opposed to asking people to figure out what that percentage means in dollars and cents. It's a little more than $40,000 a year.
That's half of some of the department heads' annual salary alone. They deserve it. I'm just saying, from a relative standpoint, what we're providing for our seniors in terms of the center is very low.
No one's getting younger.
Increasing, right. And so out of the total budget, I mean, if we are understanding your, the pie chart, right, out of the total budget is $145,000, basically. This $40,000 just shows that the 42% is our town allocation. Everything else is totally dependent on grants.
The total budget, Chris?
The total budget for the COA include, is 96. Yeah, that includes, yeah, with the grants. So it's, our budget from the town is $40,267. And the other human services are paid $105,000 and for $145,000 for that segment. But the COA budget is $40,267.
Okay. So the $105 represents the rest of the human?
Services section, right. To show what percentage we are of that segment.
I was adding the opposite way. That left brain, what can I say? Okay, so out of a $96,000 overall budget, $40,000 is paid for through the town, and the rest is dependent on grants.
Right, correct. Thank you.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, no, thank you, guys. Any questions, any further questions? No? All right, well, I think that gives us a good overview of what's going on in terms of current activities and needs. And good luck if you're interviewing for drivers. I think I heard you say you might be doing that this week?
Yes, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, even, okay. Good, because I know that's a challenge. I mean, I know you have several calls that come in, and it's been very hard with only one driver to actually meet the needs that you have in town for the requests that you have. Good luck with that. Good, and thanks for a very interesting presentation. And I think we've got a better idea of what the budget really looks like in terms of the bigger picture, I guess, of things. So thanks a lot, guys, for doing that.
There are a couple of other senior center items. I don't know if it's?
Yeah, I was going to say, there's a couple more things on here. We have, Johanna's still here, too. If we, we'll take a?
Can we jump down to appointments and take care of those?
We've got a couple of quick things here. Could you hand me that orange folder over there, too? Since John isn't here tonight.
Okay, I will start, if that's okay with you, by making a motion to approve the resignation of Jonathan Jay to the COA Board.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on that?
I would like to thank Jonathan for his service to the Council on Aging Board. He's also been the clerk, recording minutes, and I appreciate his service.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. Could we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's accepted.
And I'll make a motion to approve Cynthia McBane, Council on Aging Board, term to expire June 30th, 2024.
I'll second.
Okay. And I think she has some information in here. If you'd like to just give an overview of her background and her interest here?
It was, yes.
Whoever's, who has it first?
Okay, thanks. This is from Cynthia McBane. I am applying to serve on the Southampton Council on Aging Board of Directors. I graduated from Cornell University in 1960 with a BA in English. I received my MA in American Studies, and I taught English in junior high school and then high school for 20 years. That alone should qualify. And for the final six years was put in charge of the Alternative Learning Program in the high school. I've been president of a community nursing nursery school, president of a community council, president of the Connecticut Campaign for US, USSR. council, president of the Connecticut Campaign for US, USSR Nuclear Weapons Freeze, and secretary of the New York Alternatives to Violence Project. I'm experienced with board procedures. For 32 years until my husband's Parkinson's disease became very debilitating that he could not be left alone, I was a volunteer with AVP facilitating workshops in maximum-security prisons in New York State. During that time, I co-wrote three manuals. We moved first to East Hampton to be closer to our daughter, and then to my present home in Southampton. I started going to the coffee hour at the Southampton Senior Center and then volunteered to teach a stretch and tone class and a class in revisiting Shakespeare if there was an interest. I would like to be more involved, and when I heard that there might be an opening on the board of the senior center, I decided to apply. There will be many decisions in the coming few years, and I would like to be a part of that. Cynthia McBane.
Okay. So I think we have a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
Am I correct in that?
You do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you for stepping up.
So be it. Yes, thank you very much. And then I think we have one more, if I'm gonna just take us out of order so we don't have everybody having to wait. There's a one personnel change form.
Okay.
For the youth librarian?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a PCF for Andrea Leclerc to be the youth librarian at the library for 30 hours a week, full-time, benefited.
Is that a, do we get that? I don't see that in the package.
No, it wasn't in the package. It went to PQB last night, so I'm, I was relying on John to do this, so.
Can I look it up to you, then?
It's, yeah. It's all been signed off on by Johanna Bradley and John. So Andrea Leclerc is from White Loaf Road in Southampton. I don't know if you have anything you want to say about her, Johanna?
What I had noted before...
You have to go to the podium.
Oops, sorry. Thank you. Just what I noted before, that Andrea has an MLS, a Master's in Library Science from Simmons, and she currently is a librarian teacher at New Hingham, and I think that they are going to be getting rid of their specials. And so our good fortune was that she would be available to work with us instead. And she lives in Southampton, which is fabulous.
Okay, all right. So, can I have a...
Make a motion to approve the PCF for Andrea Leclerc, youth librarian, 30 hours per week, full-time, benefited.
Second.
All right, so, Rini and Joy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so be it. This will be at an hourly rate of $21 an hour, full-time benefited, right? Okay, that takes care of a couple of things for you guys, so you don't have to hang out too long.
Thanks.
You are welcome. Let me pass that one down to Ed so I don't lose it. All right, and, let's see, I'm gonna do, this one was postponed. Yes, we're not doing the other appointment. Heather Pellegrini has asked that we wait until she's able to be here.
Okay.
But I wanted to, we've got, before we do reports...
With the search committee, and we also have the letters.
Yeah, we got Dwayne, and we've got the Open Space Committee with Kestrel. So, anybody mind if we jump to new business for a couple of those, and then we'll come back to select board before?
Not at all.
That's solid.
Do you need a motion?
And we'll try to accommodate everybody who's been sitting here. So let's, let's jump over to the new business with the Open Space Committee and Kestrel Land Trust. And this is for the support for the Landscape Partnership Grant, which I think we've heard a little bit about. But we have Bridget here, I believe, from Kestrel. Good.
I have some notes here, everyone.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, so just introduce yourself and give us a little rundown of what's going on with this.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Bridget Likely. I'm a conservation manager at Kestrel Land Trust. I want to thank you for your time tonight. We just wanted to take the opportunity to give you another update on this conservation, our Landscape Partnership Grant effort that we're hopefully heading towards the home stretch of, in partnership with the Open Space Committee, as part of our larger effort to protect a significant portion of land in Southampton for its unique and important conservation values. So the map you see in front of you is current interested landowners that were under negotiations with and conversations with to move forward with this grant application. Because we're still in the negotiation phase, we don't have the landowner names listed, and so we're just talking about the land itself tonight. But these are all parcels that are under consideration to move forward with this grant. As a reminder, this Landscape Partnership Grant is a state grant. That's, purpose is to allow for large-scale landscape scale conservation, and so we're hoping to work with several landowners and partners to protect a significant portion of land in Southampton, as well as surrounding towns. I think when I last presented on this, I mentioned that the requirements required 500 contiguous acres in order to qualify for this grant. They've actually updated it, so that's only 250 acres, which is great. That allows us a lot more flexibility in terms of what we can include and incorporate into this grant. But we are still looking at a core around the Tike Harmony Reservoir in order to meet that 250 contiguous acres, and simply because the reservoir is a key part of our wish to conserve this land. And so we met last night with the Conservation Commission to gauge their interest about all these parcels. Obviously, the ones outside of Southampton were not under consideration, but we wanted to make sure that they had the full context. But to see what the town might be interested in potentially holding an interest in, whether that's through a conservation restriction or outright fee interest in the land. Because as part of this Landscape Partnership Grant, there needs to be two key partners, so Kestrel Land Trust has offered to be one of those partners in terms of holding interest, and our hope is that the town will be the other partner as well. We also have other partners under consideration, including Mass Wildlife and Holyoke Waterworks. But during our meeting last night, we gauged what the town Conservation Commission at least would be interested potentially in holding, should the opportunity come up, through both landowner interest and grant funds allowing it. And so we're taking that into consideration as we move forward in the landowner conversations. We have another meeting scheduled for April 3. At that time, we'll have, you know, at least firm enough commitments from the landowners to present officially as a Conservation Commission. Would you be interested in holding an interest, either through a CR or a fee of this land, should grant funding come through? And they'll vote on that and provide a letter of support. And then, per the grant terms, we'll need to come before the Select Board and ask for your authorization for the Conservation Commission to apply for this grant, and should the grant be awarded, to then hold interest and seek the match funding.
So at the end of this, so it's, Kestrel is applying on behalf of CONCOM and the town, right?
Yes, correct.
At this point in time?
Yeah.
Am I correct that the actual holding of the CR, though, is not by the Conservation Commission, it's by the town, or is it by the Conservation?
By Kestrel.
It's by Kestrel.
Or it's gonna be by Kestrel? Any grant fund, the town can hold the CR, correct?
No, the town can, it's, yeah, so it can either be Kestrel holding the CR, or it can be the town holding the CR through the Conservation Commission.
Okay. I wasn't sure that they held the CRs. Okay, I didn't know.
Yes, yeah, both are options.
Recently, when we had, we were not allowed to hold the CR if state funds were involved, no?
We are not allowed to hold the CR if we are the property owners. In this case, we're not buying these parcels that are remaining in...
So that's an important distinction between the two options that...
Okay, that's clear.
Were proposed. Was there anything mentioned at the CONCOM meeting?
I was unable to attend.
So the Conservation Commission expressed interest in both fee interests and holding conservation restrictions. It, you know, largely depends on what the landowner wants. Some want to retain private land ownership and just have a CR, and some want to sell outright. So we're trying to, you know, determine exactly what those interests are and what works in terms of funding. We do expect that some CPA funds will be required for this, but certainly not all the match funds will be coming from CPA funding.
Do you know how much the match is, or how much is the grant possibility, or any?
The grant possibility, you can be awarded up to 1.25 million. That's a reimbursement grant, up to 50% of the match overall. So it's unique in that it doesn't have to be, you know, 50% for each parcel of land. The grant could cover one, the full acquisition of one parcel, as long as, you know, the match works out elsewhere. So it really can play out in a number of different ways. But our hope is that at the April 3 meeting, we'll have a budget to present to Conservation Commission, and then we'll present that budget to the Select Board as well, hopefully at your April 11 meeting.
Okay. So would the 50% match, though, have to come from the town, or is that a combination of other partners as well?
Other partners as well. So it's, they're all pulled together to bring that match funding.
$600,000 from us would be a little chance.
Yes, no, no, there's no expectation of that. We have both, you know, the partners that we're looking at in terms of mass wildlife and holy oak water, but also we have private funding as well.
Got it.
Friends of Open Space still active and...
Yeah, Friends, I don't know if they're doing any fundraising or anything, I don't know.
Cindy Palmer, Glendale Road, what was the question?
Is the Friends of Open Space still going strong?
They're still, they're actually not, I'm not clear on what they're doing right now. They're doing some things, and, so I don't, I can't say whether or not they would be contributing. I simply can't speak for them. What I could say, however, is I was at the CONCOM meeting last night with Bridget and Mark Wamsley, and I, my test for this was that there was some interest on the Conservation Commission's part, especially for certain parcels, that they might wish to have the town perhaps acquire or hoard the CR on if somebody else paid for it or in some other way. It's a very complex application for the grant. Thank you, thank you, thank you, for Kestrel. I can't even tell you.
Thank you, thank you.
But not only that, for one reason alone, there's no names on these maps, because it is a, an ongoing process to determine which, what landowners are doing. And as Mark said last night, everybody sort of has their own timeframe for making decisions, and they're big decisions. And some people may wish to continue to own their land but have a conservation restriction on it. And as you know, that means, it could be that the town could have access to it or not. It may be that they choose to not open it up to the public. But the Conservation Commission has some particular parcels that they sort of got enthusiastic about. If anybody in this room or listening have ever been up there, it's an absolutely beautiful area of forested property, and there has been a lot of development up there in the last many years. But this is an important way to have the town step up and do this kind of conservation, and have experts like Kestrel work on these. And I don't know that there would be any other private fundraising going on between finding the partners and the CPA funds. I don't know about that. We haven't talked about that part of it, as far as, like, FOSSOS getting involved.
Well, I'm assuming, like many grants, you don't have to have the match in place when you apply, but you have to have it in place when, by the time, if you're awarded the grant, then you've got to kick in with the match. Is that probably the same?
Yeah, yeah. So funds don't need to be in hand by the time the application moves in. You know, they understand the large scale and nature of this grant, and so there is a lot of flexibility in terms of, you know, putting together that funding. And so if we are awarded the grant, we'll have two fiscal years in order to complete it, and that allows us time to put together that match funding and authorize those funds. And we are looking at private funding as well through foundations that Kestrel works with and other sources.
And when is the application due?
So it is a tight timeline, so April 18 is when the application is due, so that's why we're looking at this.
And when might you hear results?
Likely in May, because as part of this application, some folks, if they put all their pieces together right, are allowed to close by the end of the state fiscal year in June. We're not one of those folks, but it's a possibility, but the state wants to allow for that to be a possibility. So they'll anticipate moving fast in terms of awarding it.
Quick turnaround.
Yeah.
Okay, good, yeah, sure, go ahead.
So, you know, because I came before you before, that we actually applied and were awarded a Neighborhood Outreach Grant. It was another state grant, and we held, it turned out to be one program. We sent out, I think, 18 different invitations, and we had a very good turnout. We didn't get 100% of the people that we invited. Some people don't even live in our state, as you may know. On the other hand, I'm glad this is in phases, and the reason is, even though we've had some people step right up and show great enthusiasm, you know, sign me up, some are obviously thinking, some, you know, we're having a little difficulty even making reconnections with, there are people that may step up for the second phase that would meet some of the requests that our Conservation Commission has put forth in terms of ongoing conservation. So it is an evolving process. So I think that's part of this, that you'll be hearing about this more as we, as we go on for the, thank goodness we have Bridget, really, because she, you know, for the next few years, so.
Yes, I'll just second that and say that the state really does encourage you to look at this in phases, and so we're really excited about that minimum getting reduced to 250. So rather than trying to, like, scramble and get that 500, we can, you know, really concentrate on that 250 core, and then perhaps look towards a second phase with landowners that maybe are on a longer timeline or just need to discuss things out a bit more.
Sure, okay, good. And so you'll need from us some letter of support or something at some point in time?
Yes, yeah. So we'll get the Conservation Commission's approval and confirmation of what their interests are, and then we'll present that to the Select Board, and that hopefully will turn around in the form of a letter authorizing the Conservation Commission to apply for this grant in partnership with Kestrel.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions?
No.
It's exciting.
Thanks, it's exciting.
That's a lot of work, I know. So, thanks, and thank you for chiming in with the Kestrel folks to do all this work, because that's a lot of, a lot of heavy lifting, I know, to get this one together, so.
Yes, but we're excited about it. So thank you again for your time.
All right, thank you very much. All right, perfect. Okay, so, I think we've got two other things toward the COA, as long as we can keep on this. How about the Director's Search Committee makeup recommendations here? Let's pick up that piece. We had a...
There's an email from Janet in our packet.
It's an email from the package, so...
And there was a recommendation from the committee on the makeup of the Search Committee for the new COA Director.
Right, which I think we have here, right. So the recommendations were, yeah...
Two COA Board members, and there were two that were recommended by the Board, Sylvia Galvan and Janet Kane. Select Board member, Friends Board member, finance accounting person, town administrator, former COA employee, and a member of the Mass COA or director from another COA. So that was the, one, two, three...
Six. Did I get you eight?
Eight people.
Sometimes it's better to have an odd number, just for voting purposes, but...
Yeah, well, I'm a little concerned, because we also need to re-recruit a member, a finance person from, to the Public Safety Building Committee, and I'm just a little worried about the...
And actually, I take that back. Ed, you're not a voting member on these, right? You're, you're a member, but you're not a voting member on these committees, right?
I cannot be a voting member on any committees by...
So you would have seven.
Town bylaws.
We have seven.
So you've got seven, so that would be okay. That's fine. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's been challenging to get anybody from, I know for our, a couple of our committees, the finance folks have been busy with their normal workday and don't have time to meet at a given time. We can certainly reach out to them. We're having a meeting, a joint meeting with them on Thursday.
Right.
So we'll see who, who comes at that point in time, and see if anybody would be willing to, to join in on this.
I think the composition makes sense.
I like the idea of having somebody from maybe an MCOA or somebody from another COA. I think that's always helpful, to have an outside perspective and just sort of, you know, just have fresh eyes on things. I mean, sometimes you can be so close to a situation you don't recognize some of the possibilities or weaknesses that you may have, and somebody else might be able to help you figure that out a little bit. Do you have some folks in mind, or have you reached out to anybody yet, or that's just a new, new ideal?
Janet Kane, 83, Glendale. No, I haven't, because, again, it's kind of under your direction, and we were just trying to provide some guidance. We're, you know, this is kind of brainstorming from the COA Board, and, you know, it's very possible that a former COA employee is also on the Friends Board, and, I mean, there's, so it depends. So we, obviously, we have not...
We have six votes.
Yeah, I mean, so I don't know how you want to come, to make it up, but, I mean, it's, we just brainstormed, and these are our thoughts. Open to whatever other thoughts you folks would have, so.
Now, do you also, I mean, obviously, you're gonna be reviewing the job description, you're going to be updating that, you're going to be posting the position, hire, you know, interviewing and all that. Do you need a charge for this particular committee, or is this...
Whoever leads this, this committee. I mean, I don't, I'm not saying that, I don't know who's gonna be the lead person on it. Like, John, I think, is the lead person on the Search Committee for the Fire Chief, so I would kind of assume that somebody from the Select Board would take the leadership role in this, not the COA Board. Just my opinion.
Well, first of all, I think we need to figure out who would like to be on it, from the COA, or even from the Select Board, rather. Do we have some interested parties from the Select Board that might wish to be on this? I know we've got various people that are...
I mean, I, I would, I would volunteer to be a part of it, either as a Friends Board member or as a representative from the Select Board.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Rini, Joy, anybody?
I mean, if, Rini, Rini's been our liaison for...
Yeah.
Three to six years or something like that, so, I mean... So, I mean, I, she, she knows the, the inner workings too, so.
No, it came out at the COA meeting, I think, that, um, that I would be happy to.
Yeah, so.
Absolutely. I was just seeing if there was other people that were also interested, but I'm happy to, um, I mean, I'm on, I've been part of the COA a long time.
You're like a, like a member of the Board, for God's sakes, you know?
All right. So I'm happy to do it. And Francine, if you or another person from Friends want to represent the Friends, I mean, it's fine to still have two people, um, from this Board, but you're also the treasurer for the Friends, so that's, and you're a finance person, so if we get stuck, we have, you can wear three hats right, right there.
Yes. Right. Okay. So shall we have a, a motion then to put you guys on this, um, search committee?
I will make a motion for, um, Maureen and Francine to, um, be appointed to the Town of Aging Search Committee?
Search Committee, I guess. Yep. Yep.
Or their director?
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chris, before you vote, I'm just going to bring up one thing.
Yes, sir.
Is the two members that you just selected from the Select Board may not be here to finish this committee off because of the election?
Good point. Good point. How quick is this committee supposed to work? Jones leaving when? June 29th, right?
Well, as a representative of the Friends, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, as a member of the Friends, it doesn't really matter, cause Francine would probably stay on as Friends, but it would matter for Rini.
Right. Well, we need to cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yeah, I think we'll, solid point, I guess. Let's, let's start this way and then if we get to that point, we'll.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the Board could also, at some point, vote to let that individual.
Be ex officio.
Could, could, well, I would say even let them continue and, and report back to the Select Board. But I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, that's a very good point.
Bring that up before.
I'm, I'm trying to ignore that point, actually.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to ignore, I'm trying to ignore the shock point of.
Both of you.
Oh, God, what do we do now?
I know. No, that's a very good point, so thank you very much.
We also need to endorse the recommendation from the committee in terms of the makeup of the committee, other than just appointing, uh, two of the Board members.
We could certainly do that. I mean, I think this, this seems to make the most sense here of.
Yeah.
Two COA Board members, a Select Board member, a Friends Board member, somebody from finance and accounting, if we can find them. Um, town administrator as a non-voting member, former COA employee and a member of MCOA or a director from another COA. So I'll make the motion that we would accept this makeup, the com, the composition of this, uh, search committee for the COA director replacement.
And I'll second that.
All right. So that's Chris and Francine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So the next step on this, I believe you're in the process of forming the committee for the Fire Chief. Do you get the charge approved before the committee initiates? Or does the committee initiate and then work on a charge that gets approved by the Select Board?
It'd be nice to have it in place first. Hopefully, when I reach out to my STAM peers, I'll have better luck with this request for a charge and a process than, uh, on the Fire Chief, so.
Okay. So you'll.
I'll try to bring something back for next Tuesday, the 28th.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So we'll address the charge next week.
At least we've got, you know, just a rough, a rough idea of anything and, um, if you all happen to know of any towns that have hired anybody recently as a COA director, maybe we could, you know, focus there, so.
And do the individual people besides like Francine and myself, do you put forth, um, members that we then approve along with the charge? Or are you now free to go out and recruit people that fit the, these, um, qualifications? Or do they all have to be approved by the Select Board?
I would say they would all need to be approved by the Select Board.
So they need to fill out a volunteer form?
And, and send in a letter of interest.
Okay. So if anybody that you nominate or recommend, if they do it sooner rather than later, we can pull this together sooner rather than later.
I mean, at one point Florence said she would be interested. I don't know if she still feels that way. This was months ago, so, yeah. So I'll, I'll check with her next and see if she's interested.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to think what we had done with the, with the Fire Search Committee. I don't know that we had made it clear for them to come back to us to be appointed, did we?
That one, from my memory, is still out in limbo if we're going to do a search committee or, uh, analysis or.
We'll have to pick that back up again with, with John not being here tonight. We'll have to come back around to that one.
I'll add it back into the 28th agenda.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. And then the next issue while the senior folk, senior center folks are still here, um, was the Senior Center Feasibility Committee request, uh, in this case for the town administrator to contact landowners of potential sites. So this is how it was posted on the agenda. I will say that I've kind of stepped in here, uh, as Chair, and because I'm the one that has been writing all the letters to all these committees so far, uh, including the couple people, the one committee anyway, the one, um, landowner that has been already eliminated from your search, the Wright family, uh, we've, we've done all of that. I mean, I think you got to the point where, um, you had a walkthrough and, and I was writing the letter for that to get people interested in, in having the walkthrough and you guys did the scheduling of that. But I think we're at a point now, it feels to me, that we're at a crossroads. And so I've asked that I be the one that actually continue to send out these letters. So what we have here are some draft letters, and these are drafts that hopefully could go out within the day or two, and these are ones that we got from you guys. So please feel free to fill us in here. But yes, go ahead.
Sure. Audrey Pierce, Brickyard Road. Um, I'm a member of the committee. Uh, one of the things that we were kind of hoping to do is whatever face-to-face means these days, but just to talk to the, have the town administrator, talk to the landowners in that, just to let them know this is what we're thinking, rather than just having a surprise letter come in the mail. I mean, although it shouldn't be a surprise, but, um, just to feel them out maybe a little bit, have a little bit of a discussion. And then those are the letters that we're planning on sending, for sure. Um, and the, the input was, was great. So we just have certain things for these three sites that we need to try to find out in order to finalize our selections.
So it looks like, so we have the three sites. One is, um, 79 Clark Street, 89 Clark Street and Zero College Highway. Those are the three that are still in play. And it looks like each of these letters is slightly, slightly different, right? In terms of your, your requirements on, on what you're asking for them. So not just a price point, but possibly some perk tests, et cetera, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, so back up a second. So you would like, before these letters are sent, you would still like the town administrator to reach out to each of them by phone and just chit chat about this?
We kind of think it might be a good idea.
Yeah, or in parallel, just to kind of give them a heads up and it's coming and we know that, you know, even though we still have two months.
Yeah.
Maybe not quite.
Yeah.
But, um, so we don't want to slow the process down and the committee recommended Ed, I understand your point about the process and I respect that, but could, is there a way to do something parallel so that maybe a conversation could come and say, this is coming your way, just to kind of give you a heads up? I mean, cause they are acreage, location, certain things, cutting up certain areas that, you know, it gets described in the letters.
Right.
But, um, but kind of a heads up.
Okay.
Yeah. I can't call any.
Okay.
I'm completely against a verbal communication about this. We had a history here where when we had an interim town administrator and there was the initial purchase of the land at Zero College Highway, there was a tremendous amount of verbal communication between the Select Board and the property owner and the attorneys, and it caused nothing but problems. So I am totally against, uh, verbal communication by our town administrator with these landowners. I 100% support what Chris just said, that we have, uh, letters go out. I've read the drafts of the letters. I think they're very, very clear. They've all been engaged in this process. They've come to the meeting of the Senior Center Feasibility Committee and have just, you know, basically talked to abacus. Uh, they've received letters in the past. There's only three properties that are getting letters. We've asked for a very fast turnaround on the information. So I, I feel that, uh, Chris should be our continued communicator, um, in writing about any negotiation about number of acreage, acreage or also price.
We were asking for a quick turnaround by the 31st, the way you've got it in this letter, right? So that's basically.
Next week. And the next week.
Right. And then, yeah, next week.
No, it was more for, you know, hey, look for this in the mail kind of thing.
Yeah.
You know, if someone's on vacation, we, it'd be nice to not just have the letter sit there.
That's true.
Well, then I would prefer Chris be the one to call and say, I'm sending out a letter to you. Please give a heads up. I mean, I, I would certainly be okay with that if you're thinking that a letter is, if there's a reason why it has to be a phone call, but I just feel like it should be in writing. We have a history here that I'm, I've been trying with both of these committees to try very, very hard to do things differently that were done in the past.
And we're not, we respect the letter.
Oh, yeah, we totally, it has to be in a letter. It has to be absolutely covered in a letter.
Cause I think there's too many things that you're trying to ask for here, and everyone is a little bit different.
So this is more of a heads up from the town administrator who's.
Not in place of.
Yeah. Okay. Understood.
I don't support it going out from the town administrator. I support it going out from the Select Board Chair or a phone call or both. That'll be up to what the rest of the Board thinks, but I don't, I don't think we should be doing this, uh, the way we did it in the past.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts about that? I mean, I wasn't focusing on a phone call per se. I was focusing on the letter. I just didn't want to, I thought, I felt we were at a point where you're needing crucial information right now and you're at some level of a decision point and that we need to pin down whatever we can pin down as clearly as possible. And the only way I know how to do that is, is really in writing, but, um, anybody have any thoughts about Rini's comment about also falling up with a phone call and combining it with a phone call and by whom?
I think the letter's fine.
Well, I'll make a motion that Chris Faust sends out the draft letters as is to the three landowners, asking for, uh, whether or not they will be willing to donate or sell land, uh, for the purpose of a senior center, and if so, what price? And would they be open to perk tests as specified in two out of the three letters?
All right. We have a motion from Rini. Can I have a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Discussion.
We need to, in this letter, I need to, to avoid my situation that Rini was describing, we need to ask for a response in writing. And I don't know that it's clear in here that it's not, I'm going to pick up the phone and say, yeah, this, this and this, as opposed to.
Yeah, I actually emailed Chris earlier, um, sometime between then and now and said, I forgot to put, please respond in writing. So that would be definitely a requirement. Thank you.
And it's still by the 31st, though.
Yes.
And Joy?
Oh, no, I, that's, that's good. And I would add, um, response in writing and direct them to where they need to send this writing. Whether it's by letter to the town of Southampton, care of.
Yeah, to the Select Board.
Yep.
Yep.
Just sometimes.
Yes.
If you put it in, in the body of the letter that they're actually reading, they'll pay more attention to it.
Hopefully so, yeah.
And then on the first letter, there was just a typo.
Okay. Whereabouts?
The second paragraph, last sentence, we are asking for a response from you with a purchase price and he approval. I think it's supposed to be the.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Is that the same on all the?
I don't think it's the same on all of them. I think it's just that one.
It's on the one, on the Gila-Hearn letter?
It is.
Okay. And there's actually one other thing right there, as I see it. Second paragraph, 89 Clark Street, right? Not 89 College Highway.
Yeah.
In the second paragraph. Okay. I'll double, I'll pre-read them again, just to be sure.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we'll work at getting these out and about. Um, they should be able to get tidied up and in the mail by Friday for sure, or by, what's today? Tuesday? By Thursday, for sure.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. I'm losing track of days. Yeah, we just got to get it written up, yeah.
Do they have a way to reach?
But if they get in the mail, if they get in the mail Wednesday, then they would be delivered, they're all local residents, right? So they would get here, get them probably on Thursday. Well, actually, one is not. One is in Springfield, so he might be a little bit longer. The two-town ones should be able to be in their hands by Thursday, one would hope.
Chris, in the past, you have emailed them, right?
Um, we've done both, actually. We've done both email and letter.
I would send them hard copy, email with attachment, if you have their emails.
Okay.
Do they have a way to reach you if they have a question?
Yep. So email and hard copy?
Yes.
Yep. So email with this as an attachment?
Mm-hmm. Just since the deadline's so close.
Good idea. And I wasn't sure on the Zero College, whether one or two names should be on it, so I just took what was on the original letter, um, and so whatever, however that needs to be modified.
Property is owned by both of the Labries.
But the original letter went out to just one name, so.
It's since changed.
Changed after we started.
Okay. Just so, that, that's the only reason there's only one name there. I figured.
So it is in both.
So then that's two letters.
Now, it's now in both names.
Okay.
I think, uh, did we vote or did we just?
Um, no, we were at discussion point, I think.
Yes. We've got a motion and a second.
Motion and a second. And remind me, who, who made the motions again, sorry?
Rennie made the motion, Francine seconded.
Okay, thank you. All right, so any more discussion? Joy, anything?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, we'll work on getting that together here. Thank you. All right, that's your things. Thanks a lot, guys. All right, now, let's get back to our track here. My agenda again, let's go back to town administrator reports. Mr. Ed.
Let's remind the board members once again that the legislative breakfast meeting for the MMA is scheduled for March 24th, both in Westfield and Adams. Both sessions start at 8:30 a.m. and will conclude at 10:30 a.m. Please let me know if you would like to attend, and we will register you for one of those two meetings. The RFQ request for qualifications for the public safety building complex feasibility study responses were due back to the town by Thursday, March 16th. We did receive five responses to that request for qualifications. Yes, and the committee is now undertaking the scoring of those responses.
Okay.
We did have the kickoff meeting with Novus for our town hall server replacement backup and Microsoft 365 conversion this past Thursday. The project is now moving from the late stages of planning into the early stages of programming and implementation. The website redesign with Final Site is proceeding and moving forward on schedule. We have received our official invitation to start the 2023 Massachusetts Executive Office of Technology Services and Security, cyber security training for our staff, and this training will begin in April. Upcoming select board meetings, March 23rd and 28th in April, April 6th, 11th, and 25th. Town meeting Tuesday, May 2nd, 7:00 p.m., Norris Elementary School, and the annual town election is Tuesday, May 16th.
All right, and I believe we have the town caucus on April 4th? Fourth? Is that right?
Correct.
April 4th at 7:00 p.m., I believe it is, also here at town hall. And we will be meeting, yeah, the 23rd. Hopefully, will be a joint finance and select board meeting, and we will have fire department and schools present to go over their budgets. And then we will have a regular meeting on the 28th, and we'll see where we are for that following Thursday. We haven't, we haven't put one in, right? Have we had on?
So there's nothing on the 13th as of right now?
Nothing on the 13th right now. We were, we would be on the 11th, and we don't have anything.
On the 18th.
Yet on the, on the 30th of March. We might need to. I think we, no, didn't we talk about 30th of March was going to be the, your budget, Ed, I mean, just overall town hall budget, I think the.
Oh, yes.
Income, so we need March 30th on here, too, as a joint meeting with finance to go over town hall, essentially administrator budget and other, others that are out there that we may not have grasped.
Yeah, that's already been posted, yeah.
Okay, it's just not on this, on this report.
No, it's not on this form, but it's been posted.
Didn't want to lose it, that's all.
That's the 30th, though.
That's, that'll be the 30th, and then we'll, right now, we're, because there is the caucus on the 4th, we would do a meeting on the 6th instead, and then.
11 and 25.
Yeah, probably 11 and 25, and hopefully, we don't need something else.
13, 18, 20.
In between. We'll see where we are, okay?
Has the finance committee posted a meeting for next Thursday? This Thursday?
This Thursday.
It's been posted, yeah. Yeah, so it got posted for tonight, for this Thursday, yep. Okay, thank you much.
So I just want to say, I'm glad that the Novus for the server replacement is moving along. It's been a long time coming, so I'm glad to hear that. And is the technology committee and Art Lawrence assisting in that?
Yes. The team consists of the novices of Christine Fowles and Ed Gibson, and the professionals of Art Lawrence and Dan LaValle. And I will say that Art Lawrence has definitely stepped up, and is, I think he's, I think he's actually excited about being part of this, this one. He's, he's got emails going off to Novus asking questions left and right.
Good.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
And then on the, just on the, on the website, one, both again, with the finance, I mean, sorry, the tech committee, Megan Gentile and Dan Breen are really leading the effort. I mean, we're, Final Site has done pretty much what they're going to do, and it's really up to us now to do the tinkering of what we need to do on our end. So we will have some more announcements on that. We're meeting again this Wednesday, tomorrow afternoon, and then we'll have some other announcements probably on Tuesday about what the next steps are to try and introduce this to various people in town at the town hall, okay? All right, how about some select board reports? Who would like to start? Joy, you got any meetings to report?
I don't have much. Open space met last Thursday while we were meeting, and I think we heard a majority of what they discussed at that meeting with Kestrel. Planning board met last week, last Wednesday. They discussed, there wasn't much on the agenda, it was a short meeting. They will have a public meeting in regards to their bylaws. I'm sorry, I don't have that on my, I don't have that written down, but they will be having a public meeting on the bylaws, and you can search for that meeting on my town government on the Southampton site. We briefly discussed the concerns that the citizen brought up earlier during public comments with, with the planning of the town and issues in regards to emergency response. And the planning board is very open to addressing issues that have, that will come up from the department reports. So they, they agree that there, there's definitely some planning that can be done. And then Conservation Commission met last night, unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but I did speak with the chair. She said that the board went over permitting for the Redburn storage that's on College Highway, and for the ongoing wildlife management survey, they're waiting to, also to change the conditions for the bank on East Bridge because of, they're, they're more strict than they need to be, but that needs to be approved by natural heritage first before that they, before they can change those conditions.
This is on East Street Bridge?
Yes, yeah. And then there was some discussion in regards to the Democratic Committee doing an Earth Day, and that was all from Conservation Commission, and Housing Authority will be meeting tomorrow night.
Great, okay.
Rennie? Yes, I have a lot of information. I think all of the committees that I represent met at least once, if not twice in the last.
Goodness.
So anyway, the CPC met on March 8th. Virginia Ahar told the committee that she will no longer be continuing with CPC after this term, so I just want to let folks know that she has been the chairperson of this committee for 22 years. If anyone is interested in being on this committee or any other town committee, they should check in with the town clerk. And also, a good way to learn about CPC is through the Community Preservation Coalition in Boston, so you can get, learn a lot by accessing that resource. The committee voted to approve three CPA requests, so they will be sent over to Ed in the form of an article for the town meeting. The first is Magic for Matty Playground at the Labree Field. They approved $241,419.36 to put a playground in honor of young Matty, who sadly died New Year's Eve. They are also aware of the bylaw that was recently passed relative to naming, so that came up. The second one is the Manhan Meadow Sanctuary Trail. Phase one has been completed, so this is for phase two, which is the bridge, is proposed to be a low, low-maintenance fiberglass bridge across the Manhan River. And because of the time lapse and the work to be done, the costs have increased significantly, so the request is for $7,000 from the undesignated fund to COMCOM to complete phase two. And the third approval was for the Greenway Project. The Greenway Committee is requesting a match of $65,000 for the next phase to finish the planning and engineering, so they approved $65,000 from the open space account. So those are the three things that they approved.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
So we, at the last Parks Commission report that the town had, the chair mentioned that the town doesn't have many fields, playing fields. Will the playground affect the amount of fields at the Labree?
I don't think it will. It was mentioned that in 2015, there was an optional playground proposed for the field, but was never, the funding was, never came through. They had, Parks Commission had actually gone out to bid for some additional work, and unfortunately, it was during the, all the difficulties with securing the supply chain issues and everything, and all of the bids came in over what was approved by CPA. So there's been in the works to do a number of things, but, so this playground's been planned for a while, and it, I don't, it's not where the fields are.
Okay.
Yeah. Right now, there's a huge pond over where the fields are, so I'm hoping that it's not there either. But I'm not sure.
I assume it's got to be more toward the bleachers area or somewhere farther.
Yeah, where parents can watch the kids. All right, so there's no further meeting plan. Board of Assessors met today. They hired a consultant who was at the meeting today to do cyclical inspections to stay with the DOR requirements. They are creating a calendar for inspections through fiscal year 2026. He will be identified with a vest, a name badge. I think they came to see Ed today to get the name badge. Also, they'll be notifying the police, and also hopefully putting something on the webpage that this gentleman will be going around doing inspections. They're still recruiting for a PA, and we do have a PCF for continued interim PA. They're also exploring the possibility of sharing a PA with another town. They're working on abatements. The goal for the next budget is full coverage of the office by administrative assistant 32 hours a week. Their next meeting is April 4th, two weeks from today, at 10 o'clock, in person. Council on Aging met 3/8. John reported today, so I won't go through all of that. There are a lot of programs going on, so check the newsletter. Their next meeting is April 5th at 4 o'clock via Zoom. The COA Building Feasibility Committee met on the 9th, had a very successful public presentation. Abacus and the committee presented plans for the project and answered questions on the new proposed senior center building. They're voting at the next meeting on the top one to two preferred sites. The next meeting is Thursday this week by Zoom at noon time. And we already talked about the land, reaching out to landowners. The final report by Abacus is expected in early April, well before the May deadline on the will. And then, lastly, the Public Safety Building Committee had already reported that there were five proposals, and that the committee is currently in the process of scoring the proposals. We have another meeting Monday night. Ed's going to be compiling all the scores, and we're going to make recommendations for interviewing and/or making a recommendation to the select board to recommend a firm. Just so you know, the project should start April 28th and be completed by November 22nd, and the amount for the feasibility study is going to be by bidding, which is different from the first two times it went out. The committee visited the Hadley Public Safety Building last Thursday, and then some of the media members went on to see the newer North Hadley Fire Station. Very interesting, every time we go to visit a fire station, we learn new things, and it's very important, I think, for everybody to get on the road and check out other stations. We're going to be going out to see the West Hampton Station again soon, the newer one that just was built. So there are three things in this committee that the select board needs to address. The first is ARPA funding. We have $125,000 currently between what's already been approved from ARPA, which is 75, and 50 from the legislature. So we anticipate that all, the bidding will, might come short. So we're hoping that we can get either encumbered funds from ARPA to fill in the gap, or when we actually address ARPA at the next meeting, actually propose additional funding. So that is one thing. The second thing is, we did approve associate members. The recommendation from the committee is that the members are non-voting members, but they can vote if it's needed for a quorum. So we need to put the call out for that, and also, as a committee, approve a new charge that includes associate members if we agree with the recommendation from the committee. And thirdly, we do need to recruit a finance committee member, so unfortunately, John's not here, but I would ask John Lumber, and I'll send him an email to, that we, Barbara Symborski resigned from the committee as the finance committee member, and so we need the finance committee to propose another member to the select board. And their next meeting, like I said, is Monday, in person, 4:30 in the upstairs conference room.
Okay, just one thing on the ARPA, yeah, you're right. They've got $125,000 allocated so far, 75 of which is from the town ARPA money. I will, we did a couple of approvals in our last ARPA meeting, so I'll have an update in terms of how much we've actually encumbered and how much is really left uncommitted at this point in time, but I'm sure we can figure out some, some additional amount, depending on our negotiating skills over there, and hopefully, it won't be an astronomical amount to get the feasibility study done.
We did make some changes in the RFQ when it went out the third time to try to bring it down from what we were told it would come in at, so hopefully, it wouldn't be, you know, an astronomical amount more.
Right. Okay, so then at the next meeting, we should, we can just add in a, a sentence or two about, about the, what are we calling them, associate members?
Associate members, right.
Associate members. And we had a couple of applications already in-house.
We had two people that had expressed an interest in being on the committee, and they, we only had one voting seat at the time.
Right.
So.
Well, if you want to bring those forward, just let us know, so we can put them on the agenda.
Well, I think we have to change the charge first. We have to, since the select board created the charge, I thought we just have to vote in support of that, and then maybe put a call out in case there are other people that are interested and whatever.
Okay.
I just didn't want to forget that, because that was something I voted on.
Okay. All right, Francine?
Okay, the Norris School Committee met on March 8th. Norris enrollment is now 495 students, which is five more than I last reported. The wellness teacher at Hampshire Regional started a collaboration with Norris, which allows Hampshire students to work in classrooms with Norris students. The eight Hampshire students have been working with grades two to four a few times a week to help run small groups, support students with projects, and interact with students in the classroom. Another example of the ongoing collaboration between Norris and Hampshire Regional is the facilitation of, to help students transition from Norris to Hampshire Regional. It all just doesn't happen, you know, in June and September. So what they do is they have, you know, performances at Norris put on by Hampshire Regional students, and then there are times when they'll take the Norris fifth and sixth grade students up to Hampshire Regional so that they can view productions and so forth, like the, like the last play that they had on the Drowsy Chaparral. I think this is all very, very thoughtful, and I think a really good way to facilitate that transition for kids. The committee tabled their vote on the 2023-24 school calendar, and there are a number of issues that are out there. I don't know, it looks like a checkerboard when you look at the calendar, it's hard. Okay. Next, the bylaw committee has met twice since the last select board meeting. The committee reviewed and revised the final draft of the online general bylaw manuscript, and the revisions of, of the, of the general bylaws based on this new manuscript format will be on the annual town, will be on the annual town meeting warrant for a vote this May. We're excited about the rollout of the, which, of the accessible, searchable, and user-friendly bylaw platform, which is going to serve as a great resource for residents, you know, to better understand the structure and the process of their government. A demonstration of the new online bylaw system will be held on April 19th as a way of introducing the new tool to voters before the town meeting. It's going to be held here at 7 o'clock on April 19th, and it's posted, and we'll get more information out to people so that hopefully, we'll have a good turnout. And then finally, the Board of Health just met at 5 o'clock tonight. They are actively engaged in trying, in identifying potential committee members for a substance abuse prevention education project that will be funded by the community impact funds that, that our town has received. In, in speaking, they've, they've talked with loads and loads of people. We already have someone who's volunteered to kind of head it up, who's very, has a lot of experience, and also is very well-connected to experts in, in the community, not just Southampton, but the surrounding community. And I think the, the direction that they're moving is to set up a regional coalition. You know, we're in a unique position, because one of the major target populations are Hampshire, would be Hampshire Regional, the high school, and that's not comprised just of Southampton residents. So if they go into a coalition with other communities who would make contributions to this effort, I think we'll have a successful model. They're looking at, they're going to be having a, a conference call with PBPC that they'll be hosting with, with other communities, and it was very interesting that tonight's meeting, a representative of Hampshire Regional student body attended the meeting, and they're going to have a significant role in this. Obviously, we need to include the target, you know, representation from that group as, as well in this. So I think they're, they're laying lots of great groundwork, but the final decision about who the committee members will be has not been made until we see what committees are going to be involved and what everybody is bringing to the table. But that's where we are.
And who's developing a draft charge? Are they going to try and develop a charge, or is that a?
Yes, yeah, we're going to put, they're going to put some parameters together so that people have an understanding of what they're taking on when they, when they participate on this committee.
Sounds like they're, I mean, what we were hoping for, obviously, it's done under our old business, is the, you know, this is to try and look at substance abuse prevention due to the cannabis benefit payment we have here in town.
Yes.
Which has got to be an integral part of that, but what I'm hearing you say is that it's there, but even broader in terms of what they're trying to look at.
Right, and this, this, this drug-free communities coalition would then be eligible for other funding that could have lasted anywhere from five to 10 more years, and funding could be as much as $125,000 a year. So that's somewhere off in, in the future, but we have to demonstrate that we have the committee, have the capability to move it forward.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, all right. Well, I think, we'll have our work cut out for us in terms of looking at, at both committee and the charge as we go forward.
Right.
Because I definitely want to be sure that we're not, we're not ignoring Southampton, obviously, but I understand the regional idea of that.
We're being inclusive, right.
Yeah, okay.
And that's it for me.
All right. Okay, very briefly, on the, hmm, a couple of things on the AdHoc Grant Committee. There have been three applications put in over the last week for the future phase of the public safety complex design work. So, hard to explain, but with the timeline that we've got, the current feasibility, once this gets through the vetting process and approved for a consultant to work on the actual initial design, that is supposed to end in November, from what I'm understanding. What we've done is put in requests to the One Stop Grant Program, which is a state program. It's just a, an expression of interest at this point in time for $500,000 to take us into that phase from, say, November, December into the next year for further design, site surveying, et cetera, kind of work. We'll get some feedback on that within the coming month, and whether the state thinks it's worthwhile for us to pursue, then they would give us some feedback in order to be able to apply for the actual grant, which is, I believe, due in May. So this is just an expression of interest on that one. And then in response to the congressional, congressional-directed spending request from Elizabeth Warren's office, we put in a similar-type request to her office and copied to Senator Markey's office for $750,000 for essentially the same purpose. So even though. So, um, even though it goes to both Senate offices, it's only one pot of funding, they, they kind of collaborate on that. So that's one that we won't hear about probably until January, uh, from what I've been told. So there's at least been some attempts at getting some initial thoughts about funding for the future, uh, of the public safety complex design phase. This has all got to be pre-construction, it's not a, not a construction grant, it's all this pre-design permitting, uh, you know, environmental assessment, site surveying, all that kind of stuff that would have to happen, architectural drawings and design long before we get to a construction phase. So there's a, a whole area there that we've tried to at least put our name in the hat so that we're recognized as, um, somebody that would be coming to them for funding. Secondly, we just got a, a notification yesterday, I think it was in, from, again, uh, DOT, um, that we have been awarded the Combination Dynamic Speed Feedback and School Zone Speed Limit Sign Assembly. There's a word for it.
Wow.
These were free. We didn't have to do anything, well, we had to put in a little thing, but it was, these, uh, these are no cost. They're, the, um, DOT is, is selecting communities to put these out. And so these are like the, um, they're currently on Palmera Meadow. There's two, uh, speed signs that as you approach the school, uh, you get a little speed sign flashing at you if you're going over the speed, and it, I don't know if they do as much as they should do at this point in time. One is extremely old, um, and anyway, uh, we've put into, um, hopefully replace the two of those and maybe put one over on Gun Road Extension as well. We haven't been told whether it's two or three, but they're going to be contacting us, so, um, this is one that, you know, we, we managed to impress them enough with our little bit of narrative, so that's coming at us. And then secondly, or lastly, I had mentioned last week, I think, that we have been, um, we're in the running and, and well on our way with further discussions with DOT on a infrastructure grant, which would continue the shared-use path along Route 10 around the corner on Palmera Meadow, right on up to the school to Gun Road Extension. Uh, and we had put in a request for a million two. Our DOT phone conversation the other day, um, decided to up that, they felt we were underbudgeted, and so they've put out a thought of somewhere around a million nine. Uh, and there will be a group of people from DOT coming out Monday afternoon at the school let-out time at 2:30, along with various town officials, Ian, Randall, Ed, myself, Eliza, uh, will be there to meet with them. And with that in mind, uh, we've sent out today a letter to all the abutters along that section of Palmera Meadow Road on both sides to let them know that there will be people just around and near their property that afternoon for a couple of hours, and that's, uh, the first phase of just talking about the design. It's really in the very early stages, this would be a long five-year plan, um, so nothing that would be happening quick, quick, as usual, uh, with state funding, but, um, that's in the hopper. So we've got lots of interesting things happening. Uh, we seem to be on DOT's good list right now.
Agreed.
So that's, that's good, anyway. So I think in your packet, I don't know if you had it, there, there was a draft letter, um, it was not a draft letter, it's the actual letter, but it has the, um, the abutters names and addresses in it that, uh, they all got mailed out today. So thanks to Judy in particular for fighting with the, and Ed too, fighting with the, um, merge process and the, uh, the photocopy machine and the mailering machine and all that kind of stuff to put the actual mailage, the, the postage, rather, on the, uh, the various envelopes, but that's been taken care of. So that's where we are. So we've got still some activity grant-wise. Uh, I feel like we're kind of creating more work, I must say. I know Randall's sort of feeling that way, and I know Ed is too. So, um, it's true. Getting money is good, but it's not, you know, without its own headaches. So, we will keep on plugging. Yes, Rini?
I just want to acknowledge, Chris, for all the work that you've done. I mean, especially this past week with the three grants that went out for the pre-construction funding for the public safety complex, the one for Markey Warren, and, uh, and then the One Stop, I just, it's been a tremendous amount of work, and you've put a lot of hours, and I just want to acknowledge that and thank you.
Well, thanks. Well, again, it really has been a, a team effort, certainly, uh, my, my mini-team here of, of Kate and Diana and Ed have all chipped in in their own roles and done pieces of it too, so, uh, it's all been coming together. Uh, it takes time, but, okay. Uh, let's jump back onto new business. I think we're down to FY23 expense potential transfers, and Ed, I think...
And I had made a list, and I don't see them in here, so...
I don't see them here.
I will be right back.
Okay, all right. Don't see them right here, we'll take a second here. Uh, and just to note that we have warrant articles, I think we made the announcement last meeting, all warrant articles are due into Ed on, by April 6th, uh, for the annual town meeting. So those of you that are planning on presenting some, we heard tonight that, um, CPC has already got some things in mind, uh, so we will be looking forward to getting those so we can put together the various warrant articles, uh, bylaws, as Francine mentioned, and a couple of others, um, for the E, Ecode 360. So, uh, we will get all those articles in place by April 6th and take a look from there as to what we have to go through and approve. Okay? John is not here tonight, so we will not take up the Fire Chief Search Committee at this point in time, we'll bring it back around, um, next, Tuesday, the 28th. And then I'll wait for Ed just to double-check on a couple of these, um, select board policies. I just had more in thought on that. So we'll wait for this just for a minute. Oh, actually, uh, let's see. Actually, we have, you guys don't have them in your package, I was giving them, um, let's do these while Ed is out. We have two, um...
Want me to go ahead and make a motion?
Two for the PCFs, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the PCF for Brian Siminski, EMTB, Fire EMS, as-needed, part-time, non-benefited.
Okay.
Second?
Rini motion, Joy second. Any discussion? This is, uh...
Can you want to just, it's just on-call, doesn't affect the budget, non-benefited, right?
Right, it's, it's pretty, um, shifts are open, doesn't add to the budget, um, not seeing, oh yeah, so it's sixteen ninety-two an hour. Okay, so that's for Brian Siminski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion for the PCF of David Zagorsky, Temporary Principal Assessor, um, part-time, non-benefited, from 2/25/23 through 6/9/2023. And this is, uh, like I said, non-benefited. And I, it doesn't say on here, but it should say that it's up to nineteen hours or...
Up to nineteen?
It says up to fif- it says up to fifteen on here, so...
Okay, all right, so either way, it's non-benefited.
Yeah, they're saying it's a continuance of the Temporary Interim Principal Assessor position.
Right.
For up to fifteen hours, beginning 2/24, ending, well, this one says 5/24.
Oh, this is what it says on the agenda, so that would go by that. There may have been some confusion as to when the last one expired, but anyway, it's a continuation until we hire PA.
Okay. All right, well, we'll just point that out to Ed when he comes back here.
Should be twelve weeks, I believe.
Yeah, so it's a twelve-week period, so this probably is the right one, but anyway. Okay, so we have, um, have a motion, and did we have a second? I'm sorry.
Yes, second.
Joy's second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, both approved. Great, okay. Joy, while we're waiting here, let's see, uh, we have some minutes from January 31. I'm just trying to fill in time here till Ed comes back and get rid of some of our things. Anybody, we have, uh, select board minutes for January 31. Was there anything that anybody saw?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from, so it'll be the...
January 31.
You can second, Joy, so then we have all three of these, it'll make it easier for Ed to make note of these. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 31st.
Okay.
All right, I'll second that.
All right. Okay, Rini and then Francine, any discussion? Any, any typos, things you found?
Yeah, I'm second, okay. I just wanted to see, I made notes.
Yeah, it looks pretty... Pretty clear, I think. Okay. All right. Nope, no notes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we need a vote, right? All right, we're, we're, we jumped ahead to approve the minutes here, Ed.
Okay.
Just trying to do that. Any final thoughts? If not? All right.
Very detailed minutes.
All right. Can we have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion and second?
Uh, that was Rini and Francine.
And then the two other PCFs were approved with my motions and Joy's second on both of them.
And those are right here, and...
There was a question about the timeframe on Dave Zagorsky.
Yeah, on the, on the PCF, Ed, this says 2/24 to 5/24, but on the agenda, it says 6/9 as the ending date, so I'm not sure. We'll go with the PCF at this point in time?
Probably me just trying to type fast, yes.
We'll go with the PCF.
The PCF is correct.
So 2/24 to 5/24, so these are both signed, we'll pass those down to you. Okay, good. So let's go back to Ed in terms of the possible, uh, transfers for the 2023 expenses.
Right, so we do have some deficits and potential deficits, the biggest being an ambulance expense, so, uh, Bradley and I worked on this to come up with a plan to cover the, those deficits once we get into May by doing transfers, and I'm hoping that the select board will approve, uh, what we have in the works, uh, being paid and going to, into deficit, uh, with keeping this plan in mind to transfer those balances in May. So, uh, ambulance started it off, so, um, ba- basically, there is, um, a number of ambulance, uh, deficits and potential, uh, deficits, um, so, and the ambulance, the additional projected differences are, uh, for more medical of, uh, five hundred dollars, a boundary of three thousand dollars. Service agreement for the LP-15 of forty-four oh eight, which we already have and is waiting to be paid, service agreement for Lucas of eight eighty-two, which is waiting to be paid, uh, let's see, air gas of a hundred and thirty-six dollars and eight cents, uh, the ambulance Verizon phones, and truck internet of one thousand eight dollars and thirty-six cents, uh, EMS uniforms, uh, two hundred dollars potentially, um, let's see, IV pumps, one-time cost, six thousand dollars, uh, which are three thousand each, um, and then, uh, fuel usage for EMS, uh, which hadn't been, shall we say, transferred for at least a year, it looks like, of four, five hundred dollars. So, uh, the projected deficit, uh, is twenty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and five cents, uh, basically earmarked or identified, uh, ambulance receipts appropriation and/or the emergency management director accounts, which have five thousand dollars in them to cover that deficit. And currently in the, uh, and this is only through December 13th or 14th for this year's revenues, there's a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in, um, the ambulance receipts. Uh, there's another, this is a, also a potential for, uh, a hundred and twenty-five dollar deficit in the EMS certifications. On the photocopy lease and copy paper, because of the fact that, uh, I originally anticipated the new, uh, copy machine being here in like October at the latest, or Sept- September or October, uh, because of availability, it did not get here till the end of February, so, uh, we were paying the higher, uh, lease cost on the older one for, uh, an additional amount of, uh, months. The independent audit, uh, thirteen thousand, oh, and that, um, transfer would, uh, basically come from, uh, Town Hall custodial salary and administrative expenses. Independent audit, uh, which it was, uh, thirteen thousand dollars over what we had in the budget, um, we have identified, uh, taking, uh, ten thousand dollars from Assistant Town Accountant wages, uh, which were available, uh, for the pay, uh, position being vacant for, uh, so long, and then three thousand dollars from health insurance. And then lastly, workers' comp, uh, which we got our, um, audit adjustment bill, um, we've got a potential, well, we have the bill, we would have a deficit if paid of six thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-three cents, and have identified, um, transferring that from, uh, health insurance.
So can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, um, the last three, you know, make total sense, I understand it, but I'm just going back to all of the ambulance and EMS expenses. So are all of these in the column, the right-hand column, the difference, are, are they all deficits?
These are projected.
Yeah, they're, they're projected deficits once they, once they are finished up at the year-end.
Okay, so can you just go to uniforms, for example, the EMS uniform? So budgeted was a thousand, expended was two hundred, so why does it say two hundred is the difference? Yeah.
I believe he's got some either on order or still has some to purchase.
So he's only spent two hundred to date? I mean, that middle column is what's been spent through February.
Through February, correct.
So he has a, a balance of about eight hundred dollars. And he's projecting another two hundred in addition to the eight?
Correct.
So he's looking for twelve hundred instead of a thousand as his total budget on that line, and then, yeah, that's what that is. And so the ones, so the other one there is this one-time cost of the pumps right there that hadn't, that had not been budgeted before, or the pumps right below that?
He explained last time about the new requirement.
This is a, a new requirement from the state. I mean, my, my point with him is if the state's requiring it, it should be a mandate to pay for it, but I doubt if we're going to get there.
Right.
But you know, I, especially, I mean, I know we don't, we're not voting on this, but I guess, unless it's a requirement for the uniforms to be, uh, you know, for fire safety, that sort of thing, but I, I would say that if there's a way to, I mean, we're already looking at a deficit of twenty-three thousand, and we're talking overrides on staffing and that sort of thing, I mean, if there's ways that we can limit any expenses, I think that he should.
I've already told them that it's only essential, and, and this is just a thought process because, you know what? Tomorrow, we might need two thousand dollars worth of repair work on the ambulance, which isn't, isn't in here either, so...
Right.
Yeah, this is, this is the plan, but I've already told them, uh, you're not spending anything on anything that is absolutely not essential.
Right, this has to be really whatever is essential, I mean, this is... This is not a wish list here.
No.
No. So we really have... So we've got a couple, though, that are already, the boundary one is already overspent. Am I reading this right?
Yeah.
We have, and this is, I'm going by memory because I'd actually gone up and gotten those invoices, uh, about a week or so ago from the accounting office and brought them down. My memory is the service agreement for the LP-15, for the forty-four oh eight is sitting there waiting to be paid. Uh, the service agreement for the Lucas for eight eighty-two is sitting there being paid, or waiting to be paid.
So with that, just as a clarity, so those could not be paid until after town meeting? Or when could those be paid?
No, what I'm asking the select board for is, here's what we've identified.
Yep.
Okay? We've got stuff we're already holding.
Okay.
I am asking the select board, here's the plan, please allow us to deficit spend, and then allow us to bring forward these transfers in May to cover that deficit.
I see, okay. So those are two that you've just identified there, but...
And there's another one, I think, that's up there for, let me go pull them.
Looks like, no, that's okay, it looks like the AmbuPro one right up top, the software license, that's another one that's... That's another one that's, so those...
I think that, yeah, that 4957 is another one that's...
So that one in the, in the boundary at 17-2, those are really, those are the two that are, well, and maybe the medical equipment one, right? So there's three that are already in the deficit.
So is the ambulance expense line already overspent? Or is it at risk for being overspent?
The only reason it is not overspent...
You're holding these back?
Because you're holding bills.
They're sitting there because once they, if, once those were processed, it would be in deficit. No spend.
So you know of at least two, the two service agreements that are ready to be paid, they're waiting to be paid?
Yes.
The Lucas and the, which one, LP-15?
And transfers can't be made until what date?
May 1st. Or unless we have a special time meeting before that.
Right, right, right.
So what, what do you need from us tonight?
I would like a vote for you to basically approve this plan with essential spending only and allow us to process any invoices that are already sitting here waiting for any of these and any that come in in the future. Between now and, now and May 1st.
And I'm looking, I'm trying to add this up. What you have here on the sec, on the back page, in the right-hand side of the paper, is where you're going to be drawing the money from.
Correct.
Okay. I'm trying to see if, add this up and see if it comes to 23 and change.
So the amount...
You need, you need, you need 23,631.
Right, and you said you're taking that from the ambulance receipts appropriation, right?
Or transferring from the EMD account.
All right, okay.
So there's, there's no dollar figure by that, Francine?
Okay.
Right?
No, there isn't.
Right, so that's just...
So that the difference between what you have here and what he needs is coming out of the ambulance receipts or EMD accounts?
Right.
Okay.
So the amount, current and projected is $23,631.05.
And it's capped at that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. As long as it's all accounted for one way or another.
He has to keep us apprised, I have to keep you apprised of my accounts.
Right.
And on any of them, it's basically essential spending only.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that. And, you know, honestly, you know, it may just sound like we're nickel and diming here, but, you know, we've got $1,000 there already for uniforms. I mean, do what you can, you know? And, you know, try to, try to save where you can, obviously, on any of this, but... Okay. So Ed kind of voiced the motion. Anybody want to try and repeat that? Or do we...
You just say so moved.
So moved. Good question.
I think the motion should be stated.
Yeah, all right. Do you want to try and, anybody want to try and state that?
Okay, well...
So to, to move to give authorization...
To transfer.
Well, to basically deficit spend by this plan.
Okay, deficit spend.
Yeah.
Transfer when we get to May to cover these deficits from the funds identified within this plan of March 21st, 2023.
So basically to follow the plan, not only for the ambulance, but for all the ones on the further side too? The audit and then photocopy and all that stuff? Right, okay. So to basically follow the plan as presented tonight, March 21, and allow deficit spending as needed for essential expenditures only?
Yeah.
With the idea that the transfers would occur?
In May.
In May, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, let's take that as a motion. I'll sort of say that I've made that motion.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Any further questions or discussions?
Can you state the total again?
The total would be, toward the ambulance part, would be $23,631.05. That would be coming from ambulance receipts appropriation or the EMD account. And then the ones for the EMS certification?
125 dollars coming from... Photocopy lease and copy paper?
Yep. And those have been...
Independent audit, $13,000.
Yep.
And workers' comp, $6,181.33.
So all those have been identified with appropriate sources from which funds can be transferred to make them whole? Right?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I hear two ayes, anybody? All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. So that basically means no passage, right?
Correct. So it basically means at least the copy machine will be going back. Any of the other things.
What it can do.
So, thank you.
So the money is basically already spent. We're just...
Okay. I mean, how do you send back the copier machine? It's on a lease, right?
It's on a lease. I'll just tell them, we can't pay for it, come get it.
But can we pay for some months of this? How long does it take?
We're there.
We're already there.
We're already there.
Now, I would support, you know, DOR doesn't support deficit spending except for winter roads, and we know that. So what do we have? We have ARPA funds that we could supplement if we have to. I just am bothered by, you know, buying, you know, uniforms. I don't know what kind of uniforms, like, when are the due dates on some of these contract expenses? The more medical, are we talking about 90 days? Are we talking about 60 days? I don't have enough information to go ahead and...
I often go up and get the ones already that were upstairs, and I was told, no. I will go get them.
I didn't think it was necessary, but, yeah. We've got expenses that we have already, bills that are waiting to be paid, those two service agreements. I mean, we know that the audit money, you know, that's a, that's a new expense that, you know, we've got a new audit agreement that we've got that we hadn't planned on. So in order to get that audit underway, we need to appropriate some funds for that.
Yep, and the, the other one, the $6,000, that was a mistake that was made that, that...
Was the state one?
Because, right, because they put the wrong figure down on the amount. So we budgeted the amount we were originally told, and now we owe them additional $6,000. So, you know, they can wait. I just feel like we're being asked to coerced into deficit spending when it's against the DOR regulations. And if I have to, we'll, anything that's absolutely essential, we can talk about whether we want to cover the gap with ARPA funds. Yes, it makes it a little bit more work to take it from funds and then replace the funds, but it's basically what we're doing by doing a transfer.
And we're talking about $44,501.95 total? If we tried to take this from elsewhere besides...
How much, Chris?
I'm getting $44,501.95, but I'll double check that. I'll double check it. So it's the 23,691.05 plus all these other little ones here?
Yeah. So let me just say, I mean, if, what did he say? There was $151,000 in the ambulance receipts? That's what Ed said?
I don't recall without looking at the latest budget expense report.
Oh, because what I'm thinking is, that's where it should come. I mean, we keep it within the department.
It is, it's going to be.
No, 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 but what about these things?
No, these, these are all coming from here.
I see. Okay, that's, that was it, okay.
The last three are...
Okay, that's already coming from there.
So we have the others covered, but the 23 is what we still need?
The 23 is coming out of ambulance receipts, okay? But the point is, that's not one that we are normally, other than winter roads expenses. Do we have really authority from...
No, to spend without, I understand, to deficit spend.
Right. So if we take a look at all these as listed, so go ahead, Ed, in terms of any contracts that are, whatever, whatever the question was.
So we've got, we've been sitting on one bill for the old photocopier for 31154, which would take us over by 26312. We just received another invoice on that. For the fire department, there's currently a transfer waiting to take place for, on the EMS side, not on the fire side, for diesel fuel for $2,453.55.
Is this on here?
$22,000, you said?
Is this listed?
No, I said $2,453.55.
Is this on our list, Ed?
It would be incorporated in that list, yes.
Under what?
Probably on that one. There's a little column that says fuels shortage, which I think is like $4,500.
Not that I can see.
Where'd my sheet go?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's on the bottom in the box. On the second page is the box.
Fuel usage, yeah. The middle of the second page. All right, so I think my math was wrong, but let me just continue that again.
Oh, there it is.
Just to see how far we're off here. 23, 6...
And on ambulance expenses, the Verizon phones for 24895. We've been sitting on the OCI software for $4,957. The boundary for 55258. Air gas for 2876. Let's see. A reimbursement for certifications for $124.38. And then, oh, no, that wasn't certification, what was that? Excuse me, another 69190 for diesel fuel.
Aren't they getting the diesel fuel from the highway garage?
Yes. And then EMT licensing and certification for $225.
You say we've been sitting on them, but you're not saying when remittance is due? You're not saying how long have they been held up?
The EMC certifications, the date on it for what would have been the warrant payment for a check was 3123. The, let's say, 3123 for the $691.90 transfer for diesel fuel.
So the highway department is the one that actually secures the diesel and their department bills out to the other departments? Isn't that what we discussed in the past?
Correct.
So we're reimbursing the highway department for this diesel fuel?
Correct.
And that's something that can't wait till May 1st?
What if the highway department goes deficit because of the non-transfer?
It wasn't even charged at all last year.
Yeah, it's a surprise this year for fire. This was new to them to get this, right?
Yeah.
The invoices for Verizon, OCI software, boundary and air grass, air gas would have all been processed for a payment on 312023 also.
Processed for a payment. So when is remittance due? 3123?
The check would have gone out on 312023, if processed regularly.
I guess that's not really what I'm asking.
So that's been held, so that's, that's the one that's been held? The bound, the service agreement ones, Lucas and whatever, LP-15 have been held back? They haven't, they haven't been processed, yeah. Okay, so altogether, the 23, I had a slight mistake. So the 23,631.05 plus the others on the back page, total is $44,314.23. We'd have to see if we could cover that through, I think there are only...
We have three more months to go.
Huh? Yeah, I mean, there's more months to go, but this is projected. So with this, with this projection that you've got this projection column under, under the ambulance expense, you know, area there, is this projected all the way through June?
This is projected from June 30th, 2023, because I wanted to address it all at once, rather than nickel and diamond.
So we shouldn't have to...
People might say, oh, and by the way, oh, by the way.
Right, so we shouldn't need it again, right?
Okay.
No.
This is, this is it.
So our other choices, if we don't approve this notion, is to see if we can find some funds within ARPA to do this. But then that's, I don't know, if we can, can we cover bills out of ARPA?
Well, we took it as a revenue loss, so...
Is there anything on here that, I don't know? No matter what, it's all, we're already, we're already in deficit on three items in the ambulance one, if I'm reading this right?
Well, we're already in deficit on ambulance expenses. So anything that comes in under ambulance expenses, we cannot pay for.
Can't pay, yeah. But it's the first three, the software license agreement, the boundary and the medical equipment, right? That are already, or, yeah, that are already over expended.
It is...
So actually, there's no column, Ed, on the, on the first one, the ambulance, sorry, the software license agreement, we have a budget of 4420 and expended 4957. So that's, we've got to take that one into account too, right?
$537.
Yeah, the ones that are sitting there because of would be in deficit are Verizon phones for 24895, the OCI software for $4,957, boundary for 55258, and air gas for 2876.
But did you just answer what Chris just brought to your attention? Why isn't it, say, $530 something or five?
Because it's, it's already been spent. So that, that third column is the projected ones, right? So...
Right, because I asked the department specifically, in addition to what we already had, what his projections were to June 30th.
So we know that first one is already, whatever that is, 400 and some?
So boundary is going to come in at $20,000? If you're saying it's what's expended to the end of February, an additional projected of $3,000?
Yep.
So...
Yeah.
Yep. That's what it looks like. And then the medical equipment that was budgeted at $1,000 is at $4,100. That's the real crazy outlier one. And just to refresh our memory, that workman's comp thing, Rini was mentioning it, this is the one that where they billed us the wrong amount? Is this the...
No.
It's not that?
No, that was retirement.
Okay, what is this?
Workers' comp every year. In the last two years, we've got the credits. This year, we're getting billed. Every year, they do a audit of our payroll.
I see.
So this year...
For a change, we're getting billed?
Yes, instead of a credit, we're getting billed for $6,100.
And so when would that one be due? Is that a due now? Or is that one that can be wait, can that wait until...
That's already due, yes.
It's already due.
So what happens until, if we, if these, none of these are paid until May? Besides the photocopy year being taken away?
We will be delinquent and will probably be shut off.
All of these services?
Yeah, I mean, the ones that you'll definitely get shut off from are any software support that has expired, so...
So if the DOR says you're not supposed to deficit spend, except for winter roads, and we didn't have ARPA for backup, what would any town do in this circumstance?
I can't answer for any town.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, we're, you know, just because, you know, we have ARPA available, but we certainly wouldn't have had that in the past to deal with...
Yeah, that's taking away from other programs.
But it's not illegal.
I don't know.
Well, the only other thing would be have a special time meeting and transfer the funds that way. Well, the only other thing would be have a special town meeting and transfer the funds that way.
But we've got us, we got one coming in six weeks, no? Seven weeks?
Mm-hmm. I think you and the fire chief need to look at all of this and decide what can't wait until May 1st. Because I'm not convinced that all of these things cannot wait until May 1st. We are practically at the end of March. We're asking for forty-four thousand dollars to fill a gap of a month. And just to me, it just doesn't feel right to me when I look at some of the expenses on here. And I don't know how long, I mean, mattresses for the sleeping quarters, was there a problem with the mattresses that it couldn't wait? You know, like, was it because of the water damage? Was there insurance that was involved in being able to cover for those? If it was a water damage situation, like, I just, I just feel like we're just being asked to stamp a signature on that, and I don't feel comfortable with that.
We've got at least two licenses in the service agreements that are really plus the stretch of yearly certification.
Yeah, my concern is in some instances, the money's already, we're already obligated. It's not just looking at the additional projections, it's what's already been spent that may be over.
No, but what Ed is saying, he's holding back.
Yeah, I know.
He's holding back the bills. I mean, this is what the expended, just to be clear again, the amount, this column of July expended, July to February 23rd.
Right.
Are what is needed to be spent because of bills in-house.
Or paid.
Or already paid.
Right.
Or paid.
Correct. Okay, so some have been paid.
Yes.
So why are you coming for our approval if things are already deficit spent?
Once again, they haven't been processed, so we haven't deficit spent.
Because you haven't paid them.
Correct.
Yeah.
But you've already obligated.
We have incurred them.
You incurred the obligation, so in essence, it's.
Yeah, they haven't actually had the check go out the door yet, right? Well, can we, I mean, other than using ARPA funds, I mean, I don't see, looking at the EMS on the, just the simple ones, the EMS certification, the photocopy, or the workman's comp, and the audit, those look like there's nothing to be
Three thousand.
There's nothing to be, able to be saved there. Those are real, real amounts that we know we have to pay, right? And you've identified sources there. The copier one is obviously.
Have we signed the contract for the audit?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So that can't wait a month?
That one might be able to wait. We need to-
Well, we're not going to start on it until
Yeah.
we sign the contract, so.
Yeah, I was hoping that we would-
It'll just be later.
Yeah, I was hoping we would do the audit engagement letter actually next meeting, because we agreed on the audit, firm and the price. But I guess we could still do the audit engagement letter, but not actually start the audit until May. But EMS certifications, is that a time-sensitive one? Do we know offhand? Is that?
If it's a reimbursement?
It's a reimbursement to somebody, yes.
Yeah, okay.
What needs to happen so that we can use ambulance receipts without having to go to a town meeting every time it's appropriated?
Nothing.
Nothing has to happen?
We have no authority?
No, no, we have no authority other than appropriating them at a town meeting.
What, why can't we authorize the funds to be used for ambulance expenses without having to appropriate every single town meeting, appropriate?
You can only appropriate what you have.
Mm-hmm.
You can't appropriate more than that.
Mm-hmm. But what, why can't we, as a town, decide to use ambulance whenever we have ambulance receipts, to use them towards ambulance expenses without it having to be a town meeting vote every time?
Because it's an appropriation, and just like every other appropriation, it has to be done at a town meeting.
Okay. Okay. So shall we, I know we've got our joint budget meeting on Thursday, but shall I take a look and be sure of our math on the actual ARPA spending? That we would come back and take a look at this under ARPA, so we know whether we have?
Well, I'd honestly like to know what of these cannot wait until May 1st, because I'm not convinced that all of these can't wait till May 1st. And then we can decide, based on the total amount, whether or not we revisit the idea of deficit spending or take it from ARPA or any other source that we might be able to.
Well, basically, if you look at the borderline, the ambulance expense was forty-four nine. We're over budget by
Three thousand.
Three thousand dollars. And hold off on the twenty-six, six thirty-four till May.
Just take, you're suggesting just take care of the actual expended column?
Take the twenty dollars?
That's it. I mean, because we're talking about what is projected.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Which would take us through the end of the fiscal year, right?
Right.
So, so it would mean if we could do this.
At the town meeting, transfer that money from ambulance receipts to cover the difference. To cover the projections.
So any bills coming, because these went through the end of February?
Right.
So any bills coming in March, April, May?
Have to figure that, but yes.
Hmm.
Yeah, how much of what's projected?
Yeah, does that help us any in terms of? I mean, could we, could we maybe look at that, that's not a, I mean, the chunk of money looks a little bit better, at least. I mean, from the forty-four to the forty-seven to look at that. And if we said that, you know, if we agreed that we could push the audit off until May, I think the photocopy's a challenge, because I don't think we want to send that back. And the EMS certifications. Now, what about the workman's comp? Is that a time-sensitive one, too?
Yes.
Can that wait? No? Can't wait until May? No? So if we were to take I mean, if we took the three thousand in that middle column, that, the three thousand that's already expended, right? Plus the ones at the bottom, so that's, we'd be, we'd be minus the twenty thousand and six, so we'd be down to we still need, I mean, we wouldn't need as much ARPA money, but we'd need some.
Yeah, they're in the, to me, they're in the-
I'm not sure what we have left, quite honestly.
They're in the projected column. I don't know.
Okay, so if we had the forty-four, three fourteen, twenty-three is the total of what this potentially is. And if we took off the twenty-six thirty-four, right? Forty-four? I think that gets us down to about twenty-three, six seventy-nine. Seventy-nine, so about twenty-three thousand, six seventy-nine, seventy-nine. That might be immediately Well, and if we pushed off the, if we pushed off the audit, that would even be less, if we took the thirteen thousand out of there? We could be down to like ten thousand, six ninety-nine, six seventy-nine, maybe? Would just mean that we'd start the audit late.
Yeah, when was the audit scheduled to start?
Well, we haven't signed the engagement letter yet, so I mean, that was what we were going to do on Tuesday's meeting, was to sign that letter.
What is it, forty-three thousand?
Yeah.
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 Forty-four, I think, this year, and forty-seven for twenty-twenty-three.
And when do they get paid, when they do it or when they leave?
In bits and pieces.
Oh, well, we'll just say that we'll pay the second increment.
I mean, if we didn't have to deal with that one, so we might be down to like around a ten thousand dollar figure that we might need to take out of ARPA, which would be more palatable, but Rini, if I'm hearing you, you want to know specifically what cannot wait? And I guess I thought that that's what the expended column was showing us.
Well, like you just said, some of this has been projected until the end of the fiscal year. I don't think we need to deficit spend on a projection
No.
when we have a town meeting scheduled for the first of May.
And that's why, why I've just done the math, taken that out of there.
Second math, whatever it is.
I've taken that twenty, twenty thousand and six thirty-four.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to take up to fifteen thousand dollars of ARPA funds to pay for any expense that cannot absolutely wait until the town meeting. To pay any outstanding bills that we are at risk of jeopardizing on, and the rest at the town meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, so that's Rini and Joy, second.
Okay, but then for discussion purposes.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
After the special town meeting, can that money be transferred from the ambulance receipts back into ARPA?
Yeah, that would be the question, too. So that we would want to, at the town meeting, we'd have the warrant, right, to allow these transfers, right?
Yeah.
That are the projected transfers, and probably other ones as well, right? I mean, not just, this may not be the only.
Well, it may be a combination of two things. It might be transfers and appropriation from ambulance receipts.
Right, okay. But I think Francine's question is good. So if, for example, we were to follow Rini's motion here of up to fifteen thousand to be allocated now from ARPA to cover the most essential bills that cannot wait, could we then also have a move to reimburse the ARPA fund from ambulance receipts or wheresoever to make that whole again?
Request for it.
Probably just do that.
Yeah. Does that have to do, would that have to go to?
No, it's just one of those things, again, that gets me frustrated, because rather than doing basically one entry, now you're doing two and three to get back there, that's all.
Right, yeah.
It might only be for a handful of things, I know, but it's it's technically the more accurate way of doing it, or?
Okay, so I think we have a motion, if I heard it correctly, to take up to, to allow you to take up to fifteen thousand dollars from ARPA funds that would cover any expenses here as listed on this sheet that cannot wait until the town meeting for appropriate transfer authorization. Is that correct? And we have a motion.
I'm just going to say this.
And we're not putting the cap.
What are those, what are those things that cannot wait? Because my perception of what can't wait might be different than all four of yours separately, and the fire chiefs.
Ed, do you want us to go through and tell you which ones can't wait until May fir, May 2nd?
I think you know better than we do. I mean, I think the only one that seems like it could wait, which isn't desirable, but could wait would be the audit one. We could push that one off.
Okay.
But the other ones look like, on that list, look like, from what you said, the ones on the bottom part there, those other three look like they're necessary. And then, you know, out of these others, what we're saying is look at that expended column and where things are potentially overspent already, but hold off on the projected column for now.
Well, I already feel, once you said, definitely hold off on the audit, I feel a lot more comfortable with that fifteen thousand dollar
Okay.
figure, and what I might think is absolutely necessary.
Yeah.
Then we're not, we're not going.
Yeah, I mean, and even if, you know, if we had enough and we had to do a first payment on the audit, I mean, I don't know.
Well, we can't sign the contract until we have the full amount.
Okay. So we can't even do the engagement letter before May?
Okay.
Was there a time limit that we had to sign that appropriation letter?
For what?
For, not the appropriation letter, the engagement letter.
I don't know if there's a timeframe, I mean.
I'm trying to remember the letter.
You know, we voted to go with that audit firm, so we need to, you know, I mean, we're, yeah, the audit should be getting going.
I'll follow up with them.
Yeah, I mean, it's for twenty-twenty-two, right?
Yep.
So, okay, so is everybody kind of clear on that?
Yes.
So we would, we would probably hold off on the audit as not the most urgent thing to get done between now and May, when we have the ability to transfer. But up to fifteen thousand dollars for anything, especially in the ambulance side, that is actual expense, over expense, bills waiting to be paid, released out the door, checks released out the door, but hold off on most of everything that's projected. Okay, is that enough clarity?
Yes.
All right, with that, I think we have a motion and a second. Could we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Francine, yeah, I said aye, okay. All right, motion passes in that regard.
And with the vote is the expectation that these funds would be returned from the ambulance
To the, to the.
That there's going to be a number of transfers in and out, and that would be one back in.
Yeah, so we'll, I know for the next.
ARPA.
Do you want me to bring up the ARPA for the Thursday meeting or wait until Tuesday meeting? Thursday with the FinCom or wait until Tuesday to vote on, I mean, just to see how much we have now that we've taken this out of here?
Yeah.
I think we're okay. I'm sure we've got fifteen thousand left in there. So let me, let me just get our decision trackers tidied up for the March 28th meeting, okay, on ARPA. Okay. All right, twenty-four budget, oh, sorry, warrant articles, Ed, we already announced they're open until the 6th.
Right, April 6th.
So everybody, please get your intended articles in. FY twenty-four budget, so we have a new sheet that came out from Bradley this afternoon, I believe. That will take up, will that be part of what we'll take up on Thursday?
Thursday, correct.
All right. All right, we won't do anything with the committee search for the fire chief tonight since John's not here. I think we're just down to the policy review things here. And a lot of these were posted. I know I'm still delinquent. I will get it done. The fuel efficiency one, and Ed, you're still working on that, he's scheduled with Randall?
Yes, he has started on that, so that's good. And then a couple of people, including the chief, have asked me if it would be possible to write in a school zone section to the traffic control regulation.
Okay.
So I will try that.
Okay, so we have the traffic control one with us tonight, but, okay, we had heard that before, that maybe we can write in something about the school zone?
Yes.
In there? That would help us probably with some of our
Night, Robert.
With some of our DOT.
Thanks.
Night, Robert. With some of our DOT grants, that would probably be helpful related to the school. I have one other one, if people wouldn't mind, just as we talk about the traffic control regulations. It's one that's just kind of a personal bugaboo. Number four, just the word handicap. It's, you know, it's a word that's passe, I think, in the
Oh, yes.
In the disability community, sorry, on the, on the select board policies, some traffic control regulations. As long as we're going to try and add in something on the school zone, I would just like to suggest that we make that parking accessibility for persons with disabilities.
Yeah.
Handicap has really got a very negative connotation. Lots of history and different rumors about where it comes from, but it's.
A lot of people fought a lot of years to get that changed.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I recognize that, you know, when you go to, you know, any parking lot, you're going to see a sign that says handicap.
Yeah, right.
But I think actually up at Cooley Dick, they're putting in new signs, as a matter of fact, in their parking lots that don't say that. So I think the more we can do to try to get our mindsets around that, so there's a couple of places in that section four.
Yeah.
If we could just change that to, you know.
So parking for people with, parking accessibility for people with disabilities?
Persons with disabilities, yeah.
Yeah, actually, most of the signs I've probably seen over the last, at least five years or whatever that go up now are just basically the symbols with no writing.
With no wording on them, that's quite true. So that was going to be the other thing. So in the paragraph A there, it's owned and operated by a disabled veteran or handicapped person. So I think we could say owned and operated by
A person with a disability?
Persons with disabilities. You know, I don't know that we have to say veteran per se, or, I mean, I just, persons with disabilities, yeah? And then under B, you know, shall bear a blue sign with the words handicap parking. I mean, I just, you know, again, there's three places. If we can kind of just minimize the use of that, I think it would be better.
Really good suggestion. I'm just wondering, what this was only available in a PDF. I had switched it over to a Word document. I'd added bullets and numbers because it was so hard to read. I had sent it to Ian, I'd sent it to Randall, and then also Ed. There was a couple of things that came out. I wasn't sure where, how the school zone thing is being integrated into it, and also there was a suggestion there was a suggestion by Chief Illingsworth about the whole truck on certain roads, and then you had said that you believe that if we're going to limit trucks going on certain roads, we have to provide an alternative route. So, what, what's going to happen in terms of the whole thing? Do you want me to take that back? And where is the school zone information?
It's got to be written, right?
You don't want to know. It's in a thousand-page, I mean, TDC, so
We've got an excerpt of what's relevant.
I will take a stab, and I'm thinking of
Just a paragraph.
Two things. Well, I'm thinking, maybe put something in the definition section, and then maybe add another section that just says school zone.
Okay.
And what I would try to do is just define the actual space on Palmeroy Meadow Road that is the school zone, and the same thing on Gunner Road Extension. And what, and what they recommend through MUTDC, which I've been also trying to get the answer out of Randall, is those are both 30 mile an hour speed limit zones, regardless of the school. So, what they tell you in MUTDC is figure out what this, and I can't say stopping, but the slowdown distance is supposed to be between 30 and 20, and then back that distance, think about, if the sign were right on the property line, back it up that much more distance to make the school zone.
To make that part of the school zone, include it in the school.
So, so that by the time they actually hit where you wanted them to be at 20, you've factored in whatever it is, whether it's 50 feet, 100 feet, or 200 feet, to slow down from 30 to 20.
So, this isn't all laid out in MGL.
So, do you want to get that language to Rini, and let Rini edit into her?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, why don't I at least make the amendments to number four?
Yeah, and also number six, Rini, sorry.
Six, too?
Yeah, just handicap and disabled parking.
Yeah, I'll just do a search for that term.
Search for that, if you would, I just think that
And if you want to get to me the school zone stuff, that seems like a
I think if we put something in the definitions, though, that'll, that'll help us, anyway, and that, that's one part. But, yeah, we have to see just what the, the distance is in terms of
There's nothing in there, there's, I don't even know if it fits in there, but anything there about curb cuts and accessibility?
Um
On the curb cuts?
Probably not curb cuts.
Not in, not in the, okay.
No, this is parking regulations, so I don't think this would
See, a lot of this, when I, according to Chief Illingsworth, a lot of it was, you know, mass general law. So, that's why the wording was
Correct.
as it was.
Yep.
But he said that it really had to have a local sort of jurisdiction.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's why, there was, I was a little bit reluctant to change some of the wording, because I wasn't sure if it was inconsistent with MGL.
Gotcha, yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so, well, this is still a little bit of a work in progress, that's fine. I'd rather, I'd rather take the time and
So, Ed, just let me know when you, you know, are able to work on the school part, and I'll edit the rest of it, and I'll add it whenever you have it.
Okay, sure. Good. All right, good, thanks, guys. Okay, any other business that can't wait until our next March 28th meeting, regular meeting? Not aware of anything offhand? Under old business, I think we've had a couple of updates on the cannabis, we've talked about the associate members for PSBC, we've got, and we will come back around on this. Ed, correct me, we have all the potential candidates or applications, whatever you want to call them, for the green can, yeah, green cannabis grant?
Proposals?
Green proposals, thank you. The green community grant, we've got all that stuff in-house that we can, and so we need to take a look, and we've got cost estimates, and we just have to figure out what's going to be within that 138,000?
Right, yeah, what, what I didn't, at least didn't, didn't really jump out at me is to say, okay, well, this proposal's going to save X, whether it's in kilowatt hours or whatever, X amount of energy, you know, over a year's period of time, or whatever, so we can weigh one against the other.
Right.
I mean, yes, the other piece is, you've got, we have five proposals, and only 138,000 to spend, and the other piece of that is, actually, even with the incentives, we're supposed to have the money, say a project was $100,000, but you're, we were going to get $50,000 back in incentives, we're supposed to have the $100,000 to award that particular proposal to start off with. So, but the biggest thing to me is, again, the bang for the buck, and kind of, if we can figure out in rate them of, okay, well, this is the biggest energy saver, the second biggest, the third biggest, you know, the fourth biggest, so we can use that to get to that 20% reduction.
And do we think, out of the proposals that we've got, that we're, we're talking more than 138,000 total?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, well, let's be sure that we, I think we've got a probably a busy 28th coming up, so let's say we will get this on the agenda sometime in early April or mid-April, or wherever our regular meeting is, somewhere in April, that we start talking about this, so we can chow down on this one. For every quote that you have, goes way out of date, and we're back to square one. All right? And then, the last thing we've got to finish up here is the town administrator evaluation.
Yeah.
So, I know you've been working on it, I'm hoping?
Yes, I am, almost done.
All right. So, we will deal with it when I get it.
Well, we could also decide to move ahead and do the evaluation
Yeah.
and not wait for the self-evaluation.
Good, yeah. People have got the forms, if you wanted to start working on it, go ahead.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine. Okay. All right. And then we've already done the PCFs, and I think that's all we have on the agenda, is that right? Have we covered everything, guys?
There's pending items.
Not any pending.
If there's anything under there.
Second page. It's on second page? I lost my page. Pending items, well, we just talked about the green community grant, what else is in here?
One item in there, just to let you know that the acquisition of the Palmeroy Meadow Road upper had definitely gotten to a stall stage, to a point where I didn't really know if it would actually move forward or not. The drafts, the Rs, were actually due back to the state last Friday. They kind of gave a final push to the project. The water commissioners had originally scheduled a meeting last Tuesday, which was canceled because of the snowstorm, but they did meet on Friday. Bridgette Likely was terrific. She had met with, and talked with the, the property owner, and the property owner gave her some general direction of, Bridgette said, well, if I can get this, this, and this into the CR, and originally, the property owner was looking for a lot more restrictions in the purchase and sale. Bridgette said, you know, would you be interested in moving forward? So, that seemed to go well, Friday's meeting, Bridgette was there, I also attended, that just seemed to go very well. So, I have a pretty good feeling that we are back on track with being able to actually do that acquisition before the end of the fiscal.
Great, okay. And I know you've been working on both the statement of work for the hazard mitigation plan update, and for the Old Town Hall
Yes.
repairs. So, those are almost finished, and almost ready to get out the door?
Yes. Now, hopefully, when I finally turn them over to you, that I haven't stuck one page at one, and the wrong one.
Right.
Because I've been going back and forth on them.
And then, do we know that the HR thing is happening over at Collins? I mean, have we heard anything about that?
Yes.
In terms of their, they haven't said much about what they're working on, or timeframe or anything yet on that?
The last, last thing was, and I think we're back to actually a split, they were willing to work, look at both, because originally, I had, they had asked me, and I had sent them, I will say, the communities we've talked about in the past, that are similar to our size, size-wise, and whatever. And then they kind of alluded to the fact of, there's also a market implication from even surrounding communities that may not be similar in size, they could be, could be bigger, or whatever. So, I asked them the clarification, and they finally said, send, you know, send us what you think are both, in those two categories, and we'll look at both, so, that's moving along.
Okay.
And then, as long as you've brought that up, I will bring it back, because one of the members of the select board, when I had produced the original list, thought that we should not include any union positions in that study. I think you've seen in the last week, an email from the highway superintendent, almost pleading to include his positions in the study, because we haven't been able to hire, so I will ask at some point, again, if the committee, when all five of you are here, feels we should stay with what we had, or add those other four positions, and have them done.
Okay. I think the, the last thing is just, back, and it was an ARPA thing, but we've been holding off on chomping down for sure on the financial software. What's the reality of, I mean, I know we were holding off on it a bit last time, last year, sometime, because we want it, we, well, here's my point, I'd like to be able to put it into practice in the coming fiscal year. Is that realistic, if we get this chewed down on? I mean, I know there's a conversion time and all that.
Well, one, definitely, because they've actually said they can actually do it in a couple of months, with probably the second, at least in, on my list of one, two, three, it might be a little tight, but I think they can still get it done.
Because I'd really rather not wait until January to try and put something into practice. I mean, if we could
No, no.
make a final decision on this, and
Yeah, ideally, you want to put it in place at the start of the fiscal.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any further comments, questions?
Just a question about the finance joint meetings.
Yeah.
So, this coming Thursday is the schools, and also
Fire department.
the fire department. And then, it came up today at the board of assessors meeting, is, are all the departments going to be meeting with the select board, or some of them being, meeting just with finance? Are they expected to come in front of, they're just asking if they are expected to, to, that they just, you know, the sooner they know, the better.
Sure. I think we honestly have not had enough communication with the finance team to know what their schedule is, but we haven't heard of other independent meetings being scheduled, and last week was a miscommunication in terms of their not being available for the police and highway, but at least we've got very extensive narratives that they can refer to there.
And a video.
And a video, yes, exactly. I guess I'm thinking if, I don't know how much time there's going to be to have separate meetings and whatever. I think somebody like the assessors, and we may figure out others. I mean, I, I'm thinking, whenever we do the town, what I'm calling the town hall one, which is, would be the 30th, right? That would be Ed's overall budget, and then, to the extent that, you know, Jen and Lucy and the assessors needed to come.
Since the assessors is basically, basically, other than the state aid, the biggest revenue source
Right.
I would suggest that, yes, we do schedule them to come in.
So, probably on the 30th, I think that would be the
And the board of health, is that also on?
We didn't have the money, that, yeah, we may have to, yeah, we'll have to see.
I think we should just check with the finance department
Yeah.
on Thursday, because I don't want to, I mean, it's never been done this way before.
Right.
I don't want to, I mean, these are elected positions, I don't want to sort of upstage